Okay, we are ready to go.
Okay. Trustee Co., a second. Okay, make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
My second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Lanthea.
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Does any board member have a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items this meeting?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, would you like to read the open meeting compliance and certification policy, please?
Sure. I'm going to give the Cliff Notes. If you're participating via Zoom, which we are using, if you wish to speak to the board on an agenda item, please raise your hand. If you prefer me to ask the question, please put it in the Q and A. And please remember to give your name and address unless it's protected. Wow, I blanked. State law.
Yeah.
There we go. And if you're participating via the room, just raise your hand and we'll call on you. And remember to give your name and address as well. And let's just try to be nice to each other and have a good evening.
Orality is the word. Okay, would everybody please silence your cell phones? All right. Why don't we start and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'm going to ask Trustee Lightkit to start us.
To allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll start with any public comment before we get into the agenda on anything, or is there anything also online?
Nope, I have nothing online.
Okay. Then we'll move ahead then, please, with the department reports. Steve, do you have anything? Just bring the board up to date?
At the last meeting, I wasn't able to attend the benchmarking issue came up in regard to the Clean Energy Community. And I want to, I guess, to enable discussion in regard to it because that benchmarking aspect is very important for the next steps of the program. We are already involved in the program. We have signed a commitment to be a clean energy community, and we are in process of becoming Climate Smart Community also. Just so the board knows, we were just awarded another $10,000 from the Clean Energy Community campaign.
Can you talk about why we were awarded the $10,000 so everybody can understand how the program works?
We have accomplished, the village has accomplished what they call four high-impact items.
These are items that are promoting sustainability, sustainable actions, and kind of part of a green program for us.
And we are on the verge of the village of getting to the level of getting $50,000 more, non-mash-in grants. And if things go as planned with Climate Smart Community, we get certified as A Silver, which we are, we are meeting with the woman for that on March 6th again. We are in line to get to the $100,000 level, match-free grant from NYSER.
Right. And then all the grants, when you hear the term grants, these grants can't be used for anything. They're specific to helping us to continue to pursue all of these green and sustainable initiatives within our village. And so the program is really geared to a positive outcome, you know, to support villages and communities across the state to implement sustainable practices and best practices and sustainable technologies by getting points. And then you get a certain number of points, you hit a level, first grant we got was 5,000, next one's 10,000. That's what Steve is talking about. So it's really geared to a positive outcome for everybody.
Yeah, and our timelines on these grants, there's no guarantee after this year this will happen again. Right now.
The money's there.
The money is there. The state has the money. People are going to grab it. There's no reason this village shouldn't be involved and get that money used for sustainable things. The benchmarking item is merely just reporting our energy usage. That's all it is. It's nothing more. It doesn't commit us to anything more. It doesn't cost us anything. It's just, it's reporting our energy usage back to NYSER, actually to our coordinator, which is Rob Richardson. And then he reports to NYSER. We have in the plan to do new furnaces, heat pumps for the village. Part of getting credit for those heat pumps is the benchmarking. Without the benchmarking, we will not gain the credit for those heat pumps. Those heat pumps will take us to that $100,000 level.
Now, that's good. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, Lily.
I recall one of the questions that we had was about private property in the village that was over a certain number of square feet that would be eligible for this as part of the benchmarking program?
You don't have to.
So we don't have any?
No. The only thing we're in our benchmarking to gain the 300 points that's available for that is this building and the deep building.
Yeah, okay.
That's it.
That's it.
The municipally-owned buildings.
Okay, so no private?
No, no private.
Steve, what were the four impacts that got us the 10,000?
Pardon?
What were the four impacts that got us the 10,000 this year?
One was training.
Training?
Energy training for the Climate Smart Community. Another was the inventory for the
The lights.
The village fleet. The other was the streetlights.
Yeah, streetlights, okay.
And the other one was signing the initial commitment to be a clean energy community.
Yeah, and that was, first year I was in office.
Yeah. Yeah. So right now, we're sitting at 1,800 points.
Which is great. Yeah, where to come.
We're kind of in the middle of all the committees in New York State right now on our energy usage. There are communities that have 12,000 points on them.
Yep.
And they've, you know, garnered up to $300,000 from the state for sustainable, you know, initiatives.
Yeah, so the benchmarking really is a way for, you know, them to see where we are with the reduction of energy needs, you know, reliance on fossil fuels, things like that.
We're using two old oil dinosaurs in a basin.
Yeah, we have two oil furnaces.
Yeah, and energy usage in this building is ridiculous.
So the benchmarking will be pretty spectacular once we step out.
Whatever percentage difference by changing those furnaces gains us more.
Sure. And plus, it's a good thing, you know. So again, it's geared to a positive outcome. So does that help everybody kind of understand about the program? And then at some point, too, we're going to bring the director of the program for this region and Rob Richardson, and he's going to just really fill everybody in, in a little more detail if you have additional questions, so.
Yeah. As I said, the benchmarking resolution just saying we're going to do the benchmarking is another 300 points. It puts us over to 2,000 point level, which puts us in the next
Category.
Another step off.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, Justin, sure.
So as next action items on that, the resolution, I don't think was in the packet for this meeting?
No.
So it was in the packet for the last meeting. If we're talking about just doing it for the municipality, could we put that back in our packet for the next meeting with the text amended to not include the private properties?
Okay.
Since I think, unless the rest of the board feels
Why don't we talk with our representative to make sure that that's something we can do and we can get back to the board, just to make sure that
I've been in conversation with Rob, and he wanted some time to prep. I was going to actually try and get him tonight, pretty much all the time. I think he will be available for the next meeting.
Okay, so he can maybe be here directly to help work with us on that. Yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay. Treasurer's report, please.
Exciting stuff. You have the vouchers and we're presented to you. Is there any questions? Or can I have approval?
Is, I do. Because I have my feet coming up. Is there a project being worked on that? Padlocks? We need these stuff in padlocks a lot?
It's just miscellaneous stuff that they run into.
Okay. And also, you know, they're redoing some of the benches, so it's probably like barnishes and, you know, all that kind of stuff. It's nice to have something so close.
Yep.
I know. Yeah.
Dorothy, on the first page, voucher number 500, the barrel of habitat, $11,000. What's that for? Is that?
That's 75 Monroe.
Yep.
That's the last, one of the last bills from 75.
That is, I think, the last one.
That I'm aware of. Let me put that.
Okay. Yep. If there's no more questions, is there a motion, please? I will make a motion to approve the bill pay as presented.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Lanthea.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. I've also presented you with the January financial. I am asking for a budget transfer. Is there any questions on the financials? Everything's looking pretty good as we stand.
Yeah, thanks for keeping up with it. Wow.
The area I'm asking for a transfer, get to my transfer sheet. Okay, for two areas. One I kind of hinted to last time, we've been using a lot of personnel and drainage issues having to do with the backups down by the Del Monte. So that labor line needs an influx of funds, and I'm adding extra because I'm not sure what's going to happen. And also, the New York State unemployment line, as the board is well aware, we have a couple claims, and we need to cover that as well.
Is there a motion?
So this is coming from the contingency account.
And?
And the garage DPW personnel services. Raise that line, you want me?
Hold on. Actually, I'm taking it from snow removal.
Oh, instead of?
Right. We have, we, snow removal has been light.
Knock on wood.
So then is that transfer request under a 5142.1 that we see on our agenda inaccurate?
No, it's accurate. 5142 is the correct line.
5142.1, you had a title of garage?
No, I have it. It's snow removal. And I'm correcting that with you right now.
Okay, so the, so the title of that particular line is?
Snow removal. It's personnel services, it's same. It's all, labor goes to labor, unless something major.
That's personnel, not personal, right?
Person, yeah.
Yeah, the line somehow wouldn't accept it. It was, no, but I called it up like a couple of years ago, and it just won't accept it.
Program.
Personal services.
Yeah, it has to take personnel. There is to continue.
That actually holds true throughout our entire
Yes. It's very consistent.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the financials as presented and the transfers. A second.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Lanthea.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. May I have one quick thing? We put out the bid for the baskets for the flowers. We did get one bidder. I just received this today, and I didn't get a chance to send it to the board. Bunshoes bid it again. We have to get this in immediately. We're running late on getting these baskets ordered, so that's why I'm presenting it tonight. The total bid is $5,099, which I think is pretty consistent in the past years.
I think it's just a few hundred more, right? We were talking about that.
Yeah, it's maybe a few hundred dollars more than the last.
Everything's gone up.
Yeah. So if I can have approval from the board, go ahead and authorize this. Is there a motion?
What's the exact amount?
That works out if the board is interested. We receive 100, 100 baskets of flowers. I think we are replacing about half of the baskets, or 30% of the baskets as well, the wire baskets and the liners, the cocoa liners. It includes the plantings at the four corners and the herbs, the window boxes at Village Hall, and the two super pots down on Shane's Alley. And that's what's included in the bid.
And this is under the Culture and Recreation Parks line, the 71104. So this year, we have 11,000. We expanded to 9,700. It's that line there?
Yep.
Motion?
I will make a motion that we accept the bid from Bunshoes for the 2024 growing season.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Lanthea.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. And I believe that is all for me tonight.
I have one question about the transfers. So not questioning them, but just when we see the next month's financials, the modified budget is including all those transfers, is that correct?
No.
No.
When I present the financials as a, any transfers or budget transfers, I commend that I can make that I'm authorized I make. If it comes to something I need board approval for, I can't pre-guess that you're going to give me that authorization. You could say to me, I don't want your transfer met line, take it from this line. I don't want to use contingency. So.
I'm sorry, let me reverse. So the approvals that we just gave for the transfers and where the funds are coming from, when we look at the financials for, what would be February or March?
Yes, they're made by that point.
Then the modified budget includes how those transfers went out. So then if I look at this and see, for example, the snowplow costs, they'll be, they'll be $7,500 lower
Correct.
when I look at that.
Yep.
So then when I go to do the budget this year, for example, in those comparisons, we're looking at last year's budget and this year's budget. We're not looking at the modified budget? Or are we looking at the modified budget after the transfers?
When a year is completed, when we put the numbers in, we put in the modified.
Okay.
We put in what was spent in each line.
So then, let me ask the question again and make sure I understand. When we look at the budget for this year, and we have the, here's what we've lined up that we want to spend, and we look at what we had in the budget for the prior year, is that the modified budget after the transfers of all?
It's the modified after all the transfers.
It's what we actually use.
It's what we actually
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's a true reflection.
Yep. So then after tonight, for example, you might go into the budget and drop the snowplow line by the amount that we just moved out. So when you look at the budget next, maybe not for tomorrow or next week, but
When you, the next time I get the statements, you'll be seeing it in March, the river will try to be modified.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's it for me. I'm good?
Okay, moving on. Item number one, a discussion on the Arboretum. Hi, Jim.
Good evening, good afternoon. Here, I'm Jim Wick. I'm here at the Friends of the Arboretum. And I'll make a copy of our comments this evening digitally available after the meeting.
Yes, if the clerk can receive that. Thank you.
Mayor Mayor and trustees, over the past three years, the Friends of the Arboretum volunteers who spent hundreds of hours working the arboretum to help the village achieve the vision of the native tree pollinator arboretum as sanctioned by the Village Apprehensive Plan, the Village Resident Survey, and the Village Board of Resolutions. As you're aware, the concept has always been to make the project cost effective and feasible by using the existing bones of the property and gradually transform it through invasive species management, annual targeted planting of native trees and pollinators. The active properties transformation is a valuable educational tool at times when sustainable practices, as we referenced even earlier tonight, such as the cultivation of the native flora, are more important than ever. Our research with horticulture experts, design professionals, and groups associated with the similar projects has confirmed our assumptions that we are taking the right approach. With the central location, varied terrain, connection to existing trails, and multiple repairing habitats, the arboretum truly is a natural gem. We are proud of the work we have accomplished and are even more excited about what we can do in the future this spring as it's on our doorstep. All of the trails, including the new Spruce Trail that we constructed last year, are receiving regular public use, even during snowy periods when footprints and ski tracks record temporarily those that have passed through. We take this opportunity to express our gratitude for your support and continued assistance of the Village Department of Public Works, and thank you for arranging the fall site visits with the New York State Prism representatives. As we arrived earlier that day, we engaged in extensive dialogue with Matt Gallo and Sam Beck Anderson. They corroborated the recommendations that we approved from so many other experts. Our cost-effective approach of targeting annual native plantings will achieve the goal of transforming the property at a minimal cost. As another growing season approaches, we want to plan with you to ensure progress continues this year in the arboretum. We have used information from Matt, Sam, and other experts to develop our proposed priorities for this coming year. We are also aware that the village is in the process of developing a long-term financial capital plan. In light of that, we are eliminating our requests this year to the village for items of very modest expense. We understand funding is already in reserve for use in the arboretum. Previously, the Alanthus mitigation, we reviewed that one year ago, the village approved using $17,000 in ARPA funds to remove invasive Alanthus trees in the arboretum. Our research and the Prism representatives both recommended using seasonal herbicides on stumps as the most effective method to kill the trees. Our research indicates that the funding allocated by the village could treat the areas previously cut by the Friends last year and remove the growth of Alanthus ordering the southeast corner of the meadow. The Friends' request should move ahead to this work in a timely manner. The meadow gravel pile, for two years, we've requested that this pile be removed, and that has not happened. We now ask that we be allowed to use the gravel to treat wet areas on some of the trails and for other purposes. Mowing, we request the DPW once again mow the meadow in the areas around the trees. If the area of the Alanthus stumps are treated, that area will need to be weed-whacked until the stumps are cleared. Depending upon the weather and amounts of rain, two to three mowings should be adequate for this year. The knotweed mitigation, we request, per the advice of Prism representatives and the Village, that the village provide plastic tarts and straw veils sufficient to allow the Friends to install where remaining knotweed is growing. We will also need trash bags to collect knotweed that we would cut. In terms of signage, despite existing for three years, there are still no entrance signs at any of the trail entrances into the arboretum. In February 2022, the Pittsburgh Garden Club donated $200 to the village to use torch signs for the arboretum. The check was cashed by the village, but the club never received any acknowledgement of the donation. To assist the village, Friends, our co-Vice President, June Reeves, has worked with sign language, the company who has provided the village other signs to obtain a draft design and a quote. We request the village move forward with providing entrance signs at the three existing trail entrances.
Can I just interrupt? Do we have, do we have the draft design? Do we have that?
A draft design?
Do we have it?
No, because that's
Oh, okay, okay.
This year's.
I just thought
So we'll get that. If we do have a draft design, we're happy to share it with you.
That would be great. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll get, that's kind of your
Oh, okay.
Conversation. We have
Okay.
High-level pricing. The blue burner box installations, you recall from last year. Now that the weather, we request permission to stain the interpreted sign and the bird houses in a dark green color to ensure their durability. In terms of plantings, following the advice of Matt and Sam from Prism, we would like to plant native trees in the clear area surrounding the lower end of the Spruce Trail. We plan to obtain free bare root stock from Monroe County and possibly some donations. We request the village allow us to use the cages that we have returned to the DPW and/or provide new ones as needed. We'll label the plantings as we have done previously. If any stock is left over from the village's Arbor Day celebration, we request permission to plant the specimens in the arboretum. Arbor Day Celebration, Arbor, the arboretum is the village's most important current tree project and also is a great example of a sustainable project. The Friends of the Arboretum offers to be in an informational public tour of the arboretum in conjunction with the village's Arbor Day event. In conclusion, we thank you for your time this evening in allowing the Friends of the Arboretum to be involved in the continued development of this village gem. With your support, we will look forward to 2024 season of enhancements that will enjoy, be enjoyed by future generations here at Pittsburgh, and respectively request the state of the included in the official record at times needed.
Thank you. Thanks for all your good work, too. And also, that has the list of everything you're asking for?
Yes.
Or do we have? Okay, because we're going to need a detailed list to, you know, so we can follow up with you all.
Like bullet points to get exactly what you want.
Yep.
Yep.
Great.
Great, thanks so much.
Getting out there again.
Yeah, Justin, sure.
I just wanted to also say a thank you to the Friends of the Arboretum and mention to folks here who might not know where it is. It's, if you go down over the bridge and take a left on the canal trail, we're talking about the park that's past the Del Monte over in that area. So cool place to check out, and I really appreciate the Friends of the Arboretum using their effort and making proposals that don't really cost very much, and that will help us to move forward with the arboretum. So I just kind of took a sketch of notes as you were speaking, and all of that sounds really reasonable, so let's get the letter on the record and review it and
Yeah, we'll get the list and check that.
And can I just add a little bit of details in that?
Name and address, please.
Robert Forbes, Southern Washington Avenue, President of the Arboretum. The reason we selected the area around the lower end of the Spruce Trail is when we talked to Sam and Matt from Prism, what they suggested over time, the best way to achieve the goal of what we want the arboretum to be is to annually target an area and prepare that area for planting, and then focus on that for one year. And the best way to prevent invasors from coming in is to get natives started to cultivate it and steward it for a few years till they take hold. That area is an optimal place to do that because there's nothing there right now, so it'll be easy to plant the plants in that area this year. The other advantage of doing that is one of the goals that we've had is we want to visually cut off the link to the DPW property where the old road is, because we don't want people to walk towards the DPW. And this will help visually fill that in and establish woods where it's missing right now. So we think it's a good choice.
Thanks. Thanks for that update. That's great.
And thank you to all the volunteers. You guys are working great, doing great work, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
We love it.
Thank you. Labor of love.
Yeah, of course it is. Yeah, Lily, I have a question. Procedurally, do we look at, let's call it the wish list?
The list, yes.
Do we need to deal with each individually, or can we approve or discuss approval of the list in total? In other words, this list was
I think we could just take a look at the list and bring it back on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Why couldn't we just do that?
So that we can
The spring's coming and, you know
Consider every request as one.
Yeah.
And approve it as one action.
And if there's things that we know we can't fund, you know, okay, we talk about that, but let's just, let's try to do it all, you know?
Right.
Let's take a look at the whole list and bring it back.
We wanted to consolidate it and minimize the approach with your time and do whatever we can to prepare some plants.
Yeah, and I think that's great. Thanks so much.
So the action item, then, just to be clear, is the instruction to Dorothy to add the letter to the next to the next public meeting agenda, and we'll discuss.
And the list, any additional information you can send in? Anything would be great. Any costing, the sign, everything.
The cost will also be included in the estimate.
Yeah, we'll have more information on costs. We do have an estimate for the sign from sign and region. We'll send you our draft.
Great. Thanks so much. Okay, next up.
Oh, I got a comment from Steve, too.
Oh, Steve, yes.
The sign would have been reminded to HBV, correct?
We need to get the information and, you know, the specs on that. Yeah. Yep, all part of the process. Next up, discussion on the multi-year financial and capital plan. You sent things out.
We sent it out on Friday. We see any comments, so I'm going to.
Look at the template. Thanks, Danielle. Have a great evening.
So I think at this point, the report is good. We can go ahead and start discussions with Donigan again, have them review it and see what other suggestions they have. Actually, all the work the staff can do is done.
Yep.
So, if I may.
Yep.
Are you, I think I've got the right copy of the spreadsheet up here that were reviewed by the board at the last budget meeting, right? So there wasn't anything sent after that, correct? Or was there a set that was sent after?
There was a set that was sent on Friday.
One on Friday.
I don't know if I received that.
Yeah.
Yes, I know. Friday, I know.
I might have. Oh, yes. Okay, so I've got the copy on.
What was received Friday is per suggestions from the budget meeting, those changes were made and.
And you worked on it, Danielle worked on it, Zach, I reviewed, you know, we all.
Yep.
Internally worked on it.
So here is my question. Now, I understand we can bring in Donigan Associates this time. I really think that we have more to do. And what I mean by that in particular is in the 2024-25 Capital Improvement Plan, but was this made public by chance yet?
No, because it's a do-over.
Currently draft, so we don't have to. Okay, that's more extreme. I'll just put it out there that the total 2024-25 budget year improvement totals, why we labeled them behind as smart capital improvement totals? I don't know, but it'll be it. $2 million. We have a budget that, the tenant budget for next week, is about $2 million.
1.8.
1.8. The $2 million in capital improvements does include, if I'm not mistaken, or does not include Southwood, correct?
No, I believe it is in there.
Is it in there? Am I just missing something? Oh, there it is. Yep, thank you. So that's 750,000. That leaves the remaining 1.25 million in the 2024-25. Donigan Associates as unelected officials, while they can be consultants, they're not going to have the hard conversations as to what we prioritize and what we don't. We're going to pay them to come and tell us to prioritize this. I think we know that already. We're paying them per hour. I don't see a reason to do it. What I think needs to happen is some really hard discussions internally within different departments through the administration, a prioritization and a pushing out of these expenses into years that would be reasonably appropriate for the budget officer to put in the reserves necessary to fund. If, to that end, one would not like to and would rather have input from the trustees as to what we would prioritize for now, I think then we have to have that conversation. And Donigan and Associates is not going to help us, and they're just going to charge us money to sit here and listen to us convince. So with that in mind, I think we schedule a long-term capital planning meetings, just like the budget meetings. We put them on the hopper, and then we figure out what can we put into a budget and what are we going to put in the budget? Because right now, as the budget is presented, right? So with the mayor and Dorothea, Dorothea currently is the budget officer, we have no reserves funding any of the long-term capital plan. So what's the point of putting this together if we're not going to finance it, right, in the budget? So the question I'm going to have is, that budget, right, when we talk next week, is either going to try or not going to try to fund expenses that are on the horizon that we need to, to keep this village operating, right? We're looking at all these things, and we can go through them all. We can say, we need this, we need that, we need that, right? Thing is, you can't pay for them all. And right now, with a budget that doesn't have any money going into reserves to finance them, what we're doing is creating a list of impossibilities, right?
I'd like to interject something just really quickly.
Sure.
To say that right now, we don't have any reserves. We actually have the reserves. It's on our agenda. In other words, just so everybody understands, you cannot fund a reserve if it doesn't exist in a municipality. So we, as a board, have to set them up. This is a reserve for, you know, the roads or for infrastructure, you know, whatever. And then we can put the money in. So you are technically correct. Of course, we have no money in the reserves because we don't have the reserves. So the cart before the horse kind of scenario. So that's the action that, you know, this board will be taking tonight, hopefully. Yeah.
Thank you. And to that end, let's assume we create the, what looks to be 13 different individual reserves, right? And each of those reserves has the ability to potentially fund, if funded, these items. So I think we've got work to do before we go call Donigan. And I think that work is we sit around and we figure out, okay, what are we really willing to finance, right?
I think that's where that's going. But I think really the question is, the template that you received, based on the input, looking good? Like, we can work with that template?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's start with, that's actually, I think, really.
Take a step back.
You got a yes, everybody. Because you're absolutely right. We need to drill down, and if this board's, with the input from the departments, responsibility fiscally to say, okay, the template looks good. We now have these things that we need to plug in and prioritize. It comes back to us ultimately. That's where it is. If there were any tweaking and tuning on the template, and we need this or that, maybe Donigan could help us with that. But now we don't need them at this point.
I think that's true.
So I think, I'm feeling that I'm in agreement with that, that it is about really drilling down. You know, our DPW superintendent can't be here. He needs to be part of this process, you know, because the most significant portion of our budget is for our Department of Public Works. It's, what is it, about 60-some percent, 70, something? More than that, probably 70, yeah.
So your idea of setting aside special meetings for the long-term capital plan?
For workshop.
A workshop, separate from the budget.
Separate from the budget, but quite possibly in advance of the next budget or behind the next. Like, all this kind of has to happen at the same time. But to that end, uncomfortable funding reserves once created, with some of the uncertainties of what the order that we put them in is, knowing that we can always change the transfer before we have the funds to do different things. That all said, when we get here, there's things that we're going to have to do, right? Quite possibly, there's things that we want to do, and then there's things that if we could get funded, we'd do right away. And I mention that because we may have seen in the news media the New York Forward Award to Webster and, not Caladonia, what was the other? Masseter. $4.5 million. And it was last week that the pro housing community designation or the potential could or could not help us. We don't know. There is some legal consideration.
Question from the legal there.
Either way.
I think there's a lot of questions.
Regardless of how you get on top of that pile, there's money that's currently being funded. And if anybody listening tonight or all of us have an interest, if you go to the New York Forward website, they'll show you the projects and the structure of the awards. But not only that, how Webster applied, what the grant looked like. It was like 24, 25 pages. But to present that, right? We need to know, here's a whole bunch of stuff that we'd like to spend money on, that may be capital improvements that we can't do. It isn't the things that, like roads. They're not going to come in and help us with roads. But when we do this long-term capital plan, we want to, I think, think forward, right? In addition to the things that we just need to get done, that we can use it as a mechanism by which we say, hey, look, these are all these great things that we just can't afford.
Yeah, and that's why with the template that was, internally that Dorothea worked so hard on with Danielle Reller from the DPW and with Zach Lyer, there's the categories indicating sources of funding, just for that reason. So could we go for a grant? Can we, you know, is it something that's right out of a reserve? You know, that kind of thing. Is it a general fund? You know, I think that's, and that actually makes it far more transparent to anybody looking at the budget, like, where are you getting the money? You know, so we probably should have a category for bake sale.
Yeah. So anyway, I think our next step before calling Donigan is to schedule a meeting for the long-term capital.
Let me just straight with Donigan. My point of sending it to Donigan was to see that we had the structure right.
Like, just, it was, that was my understanding. It was just a, is this looking okay?
It's still always going to be a board decision. To me, it's making sure we got all the pieces because that's been the concern back and forth. We've been here several times. That's why we want to make sure that everything that the board is looking for from this is got in there. And if we're as powerful, I don't need to send it to Donigan. That was just going to be, okay, we didn't think that. We had everything.
It's a sanity check.
Making sure the structure, everything you wanted in this plan is there.
So it would be, you know, not a lot to send it to Donigan just for their review. It's a review.
But the thing is, is that we really won't know if we have everything until we start to get into the nuts and bolts of things, right? And then if we need something.
I think, again, it was more structured. It's not the items themselves. That's all.
Oh, you're talking about the weight percentage? The template? Okay.
Because they might just say, there's another way that you could look at this that would be more beneficial, nothing more than that.
I just want to make sure the board's happy because.
That's all it is.
Several different expressions.
That's all it is.
Now we would just kind of be done.
I don't want to delay our meeting and the hard discussion to wait for their opinion on the format because I think when it comes back, frankly, it's going to be fairly minor comments. In the end, they may take a lot of this and put it into a different format that's, you know, more friendly to a master plan for a multi-year plan. But for us, for what we need to do, we've got all the departments reporting, we've got all the items listed, and now we've got to make some hard choices.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, so do you want to schedule that?
So are we going to do it by department?
Well, we got to, Zach, but I got to bring another piece that's tied to this, and I should have did it under my village clerk, was GPI contacted me. They want to present engineering firms to come in and present to you where they are with the engineering. So I'm hoping, since we have a budget meeting scheduled for Monday, that the board is amenable, so if you try to control the number of meetings you have, is to have them tag at the end of the budget meeting. Maybe have them come in at like 5:30 or 6 o'clock.
That would give us a different.
Then they can do their half-hour presentation, and we can have the public and whatever.
Well, would we tag it on to the budget meeting? Would we tag it on to the long-term capital plan meeting?
I think the sooner we get the information, the better from them because that's concrete information we're going to be getting. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't care when they come in. I think that's fine. I guess as far as the next budget meeting, I noticed there are a lot of items that have come into the 24-25 Capital Improvement Plan. You know, we've got, and this is not in front of the public yet, and I know it's in draft form, but I think that generally, when we're talking about something like this, we should just send it out, make it part of the packet. So I would do that for the next budget meeting, you know, have this out there. And then I think the next thing is really, I don't know, Dorothea, maybe I could just ask you. So we've got like 1.8 million with DPW Capital Improvement Plan totals, and then another 166,000 in Climate Smart Capital Improvement Plan totals. Are those things a part of the first budget that you circulated or not yet?
The first draft budget I put out, I included the equipment in there. I didn't include the roads and all the other parts. There's little bits and pieces that are in there, but not the full amount, no.
You may recall when the first run-through, we were still waiting on estimates. And I think the board was informed of that.
If I, honestly, I looked at it, and if I filled that in, you really don't want to know what the tax increase would be to cover everything. But.
That's fine. I guess what I'm going for here is that, you know, we've got a couple million in expenses here for 24-25. I don't even know if that includes stuff like the DPW bathroom.
No.
It does not. So it's, you know, more than a couple million. And that's in addition to the roads, the million dollars in debt for the roads, is it? Or?
757. Nobody's in there.
Oh, 757. Oh, no, those are different roads. Oh, no, Southwood is there, okay. But part of that, that's like the debt service for the.
The debt service.
Bottom line, what would you like to see for them for the next meeting? Just so we're tracking with this.
I know, I'm just trying to understand. So now I think I understand where we are. Basically, I don't, you can't separate this from the budget, is what I'm going at. We have to talk about these items, and we have to talk about these, you know, big-ticket this year spending items because we're talking about the budget, right? It's, we're deciding on this year's expenses, and we've got a huge amount of expenses in there.
That's the conversation that the board has to have.
Yeah, so I would talk about this capital plan, the budget, and have GPI at the next meeting.
All three things together?
Yeah, because I just don't think you can separate them. I mean, GPI goes somewhere else, I guess, but like, we're talking about 24-25 expenses here in the capital plan. I don't see how, I mean, that's just budget stuff.
And to that end, under Funding Source 1, that column on the consolidated report, because we know, for example, we, or at least herefore, we discussed the bond as the way to finance Jefferson, oh, I'm sorry, Southwood. And I see you have East Jefferson Circle, Stone and Oil, in that same line item. Can we put in a Funding Source 1 debt service in budget? Like, what?
Until, well, it's in the budget because it's just a meeting.
Yep.
So you approve that bond. I don't know what's happening.
Sure, but at a minimum, say, a tentative, like.
Sure, we can fill that.
Whatever you're giving us in the budget, it'd be nice to know what, at least initially, we prioritize because that then has to go right to the top of the list.
Yep, no, I can fill it in.
Right?
Yeah, we can make sure that's more.
We have, at least I have, operated over the last year since the last budget under this general understanding that Southwood is number one priority for the multi-year capital plan. So let's put that in, let's roll it to the top, and.
DPW aligned their items, so.
They did.
Did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I will check with them and see where it's placed and how it is.
Maybe they're considering it not part of the, because right now, it's under, it's the ninth one, even though we know we're going to finance it.
I'll check with Danielle.
That doesn't make sense because that wasn't the conversation we had.
Yeah, so you see, sorry, I know the public can't see this, but you got 1 through 8 on the left, and then down here, not numbered, is roadwork, 757 for Southwood and East Jefferson, so.
That wasn't a conversation we had. I wonder if she, well, okay, we'll follow up.[1664.05] I wonder if she, well, okay, we'll follow up, we'll follow up, because that was not the conversation.
No, it was aligned in the sheets, and I assume, I, I'm being honest, I have to take a look.
And, and almost, to, to some degree, I mean, having this conversation, do you know Zach will be able to be here at the budget meeting?
Yes, Derek is planning on the budget meeting.
Yeah, he's a lot sick, but he can't make Tuesdays anyway.
Perfect. All right, well, I think, uh, we're set up for next Tuesday then, right?
Monday.
On May?
It's next Monday.
Oh.
I don't have Monday.
It's the fourth I send-
Yes, I do.
I send it out.
I'm just going to double check.
So, just so I know for the packets, make sure I'm clear. We're going to start, agenda item one is going to be multi-year capital plan, agenda two is village budget, three, we're scheduled GPI for like 6 o'clock, and we finish with our budget work in.
Which is at four, right? So, why, so we're doing budget?
It's usually a hard stop at 5:30. But we're putting it, we're putting in, we're doing the long-term capital plan and the budget at the same time. So you're suspecting that, and GPI's got a half hour.
And good in, we need to make some progress on the budget.
Yeah, we have to make progress on the budget, definitely.
So I will send all that out. You'll see your packets on the front.
Okay, great, thank you. Hi, Jeff. Welcome.
Hi, Jeff.
Okay, so next up, and it is perfect timing-
Okay, here we go.
Review of the proposed reserve resolutions. Are your ears burning? All right, let's see where we are here. Yeah, thanks for all your work on this, too.
Plan works, thank you, Jeff.
So what this is, is resolutions for us to set up reserves to fund for very large projects or emergencies, or things that happen, occur in our village, such as roads, infrastructure, things like that. Our buildings, you know, our DPW building for Village Hall, and it's sort of, there's a number of reserves. Some of them are reserves that have been in existence going back to the 1970s, I think, yeah.
Earlier?
Yeah, or maybe even earlier.
Earlier in the 70s, too?
Yeah, a long time ago.
1961.
Far away, in another land. So anyway, these reserves were set up in a way with language that we could not access the funds. The language didn't match what we could do with the funds in more contemporary times. So what we're doing now, and what our attorney has done, is drafted all of these different resolutions to repurpose some of these older funds, so we can now access the money if needed. And in addition to that, we have some new reserves set up going forward that this board has directed our attorney and, and our village clerk and treasurer to work on. So, that's what's before us tonight. So, we have all kinds of resolutions. And I think, you know, we've all had an opportunity to give some feedback into the tweaking and all of that. And I think it's really in the best interest, fiscally, if we want to go ahead and fund reserves, to set up the reserves, and also to repurpose those reserves, so we would be able, as necessary, to access those funds on behalf of our village. I think it's, uh, fiscally appropriate to do this, and I support it. So, I'd like us to move forward. Do you have any other questions for Jeff or Dorothea on any of these?
Do we have to approve these, uh, reserves one by one, or is it a group?
One by one.
So maybe we should start just looking at the first one, see if I raise any trouble, and if not, then we-
Start with number one, there you go.
Start with one, and see if there's any issues, and if not, we can make a motion, and I think that point would be easiest, right?
So, okay, does anybody have any que- Dorothea, do you want to run it on the first up of the reserve, which one we have?
All right, we'll start with Equipment and Vehicle Repair Reserve Fund. This is creating, let me make sure I say this right, creating a sewer fund Equipment and Vehicle Repair Reserve.
Yeah, I'll look at that.
Make a motion to approve the Sewer Funds Equipment and Vehicle Repair Reserve Fund.
I second. Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up.
Good job.
Oh, and I understand, would we identify sort of two different pots of money? One is our sewer fund, because we run our sewer, and the other is our general fund for all the other expenses in the village. So you're going to hear those terms back and forth when we're setting up those reserves.
Okay, creating a general fund Equipment and Vehicle Repair Reserve Fund.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the General Fund Equipment and Vehicle Repair Reserve Fund.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up.
Okay, creating a sewer fund Equipment and Vehicle Reserve Fund.
Okay, great, not prepared.
Sorry, what's that?
Wait.
It's-
Right, this one is not-
Once for repair and once for the equipment, yeah.
Yes, purchase.
I know, it always catches me.
Continue on, unless anybody else has to-
You're on a roll.
Yeah, sure.
Kind of a tag team.
I made a motion to approve the Sewer Fund Equipment and Vehicle Reserve Fund.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up.
Creating a general fund Equipment and Vehicle Reserve Fund.
Make a motion to approve the General Funds Equipment and Vehicle Reserve Fund.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Creating a sewer fund Infrastructure Repair Reserve Fund.
Make a motion to approve the Sewer Fund Infrastructure Repair Reserve Fund.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next up.
Creating a general fund Infrastructure Repair Reserve Fund.
Make a motion to approve, to create a general fund Infrastructure Repair Reserve Fund.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We're on a roll, next up.
Creating a general fund Infrastructure Reserve Fund.
Before I make this motion, I just wanted to reference, there will not be a sewer fund Infrastructure Reserve Fund, because we are not ever going to create a new sewer. We're just going to repair it.
In other words, we would never replace the entire sewer system at once. If we did, that'd be a problem.
We are assuming big, long lengths of the sewer are still a repair, rather than replacement. So I make a motion to create a general fund Infrastructure Reserve Fund.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up.
One second. My paper's sticking. Okay, creating a sewer fund Building Repair Reserve Fund.
Before I go here, I just wanted to reference that in this instance, if you either do DPW building or some other-
Facility.
Facility, it's assumed the sewer may pick up some of that cost, rather than just fall on, uh-
General.
So I make a motion to create a sewer fund Building Repair Reserve Fund.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Are you feeling left out, Steve? Creating a general fund Building Repair Reserve Fund.
So there's the only sign of the building, those buildings. I make a motion to create a general fund Building Repair Reserve Fund.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Getting there.
Yep.
Creating a sewer fund Building Replacement Improvement and Alteration Reserve Fund.
So this is for brand-new buildings, significant improvements or alterations. Make a motion to create a sewer fund Building Replacement Improvement and Alteration Reserve Fund.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Counterpart, right?
I got it.
All right.
Creating a general fund Building Replacement Improvement and Alteration Reserve Fund.
Make a motion to create a general fund Building Replacement Improvement and Alteration Reserve Fund.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Lightit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
This is a great moment for our village. It really is. Thanks for all your good work, Jeff and Dorothea, and all the trustees, too.
We have a lot harder than sound it tonight.
Just to get to this point, this is great. And I understand that the funds, uh, the funds that we couldn't access in those old reserves was almost, I think it was about $450,000 that we just haven't been able to access for decades. So, this is really good for our village.
And that is still a motion and stuff that we'll have to, with determination.
Yeah, as we start to distribute, yeah.
Eleven reserve funds, it's just-
Two more coming.
Pardon me? Yep. Two more, two more on the way.
Debt and contingency-
Yeah.
And tax stabilization.
Is that the liability you want?
It's one for the insurance, if you, oh, and it's also, really, what it says is the tax stabilization, like, so if your revenue goes up, down, down, whether you've got something there, keeping up, running a stream, by raising taxes.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, next up, uh, we have, um, the South and Wood Street Bonding Resolution, and, oh, this is the one where we need the supermajority vote.
Correct.
Okay, so, we have five members on the board, and typically, um, things will pass by a simple majority of three trustees out of five. A supermajority means that we would need four votes to pass. This is a resolution to go for a bond, publicly issued bond.
And-
So, yes.
So quick, I spoke to Bernie Donigan, because there was concerns with doing the resolution, and absolutely, this is just authorizing you to do the borrowing. It isn't guaranteeing you're going to do the borrowing. It's giving you the ability to do it. So you can, as you say, your bailout point, you still have your bailouts. You, if, there's no, um-
Got to have it.
It's not, it's not-
Not set in stone.
No, it is absolutely not set in stone. It just gives that authorization for the board to go ahead and do the borrowing, as needed.
The only cost to that would be the sunk cost of working through this with them, right?
Right. You're going to pay that anyway, whether-
Still choose to step back, so going to the, the multi-year capital plan, if somehow South and Wood doesn't hit the top, then maybe this isn't the route we go.
Correct. This just establishes the ability to take the money, get the money that you need. Also point out, and that's further discussion, you have expenses already earmarked that you are hoping to take and pay for out of this bond, in this current year budget, so-
Yeah, that's true. Thanks for that reminder.
Okay, but this is just opening the door to allow you to borrow the money if you decide that it's what you need to do.
Yeah.
I have one question, so now that we have the reserves and stuff, going back, and I'm sorry, just slightly back to the reserves, but could we note in that consolidated multi-year plan, which reserve you would identify for each of those items?
Sure.
I think it'd be useful.
Let me say sure enough, try.
Okay.
Yeah, I suppose we can.
Yeah.
As a funding source, you mean, like, we could-
Yeah.
That's under Funding Source.
Well, as a funding source, but more importantly, like, as we start to order and think about, whatever we arrive at, we're going to have to figure out, if we've got 100 grand, are we putting 20% over here, 10% over here, or are we doing it all at once? Because that's our primary priority.
Yep.
The other, just brief comment, is the reallocation of all the reserves. That's coming back to us later, right? And that'll be after the multi-year capital plan is adopted, I would think.
Um, I would suggest sooner than later. Only because you're looking at your budget in general, and if you want to access some of those funds for some of those projects to help with your multi-year capital plan, that would-
Set a limit as to worse.
Yep.
But identifying which of the reserves that we just created, we want to dump them into, would suggest that we prioritize our items.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think they can happen pretty closely together. Let's put it that way. How's that?
Yeah.
There will be procedural steps involved in going from where they are now to where you want them to end up.
From the older, the old ones?
Right.
Yeah.
No.
It'll be a matter of a couple months' need.
That's why I think we want to do it-
That's why we want to get on it.
To actually have access to those funds.
Understood, yeah. Understood. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, Justin.
On, on this, um, I've, I've expressed some, uh, some concern about taking on this amount of debt in previous meetings. We're looking at just under a million dollars, uh, which is pretty considerable, given that our revenue is somewhere less than 2 million. So, if you're buying a house personally, if you're taking on this much debt as a municipality, it's a big thing. And, and the reason that there is a law that says that we have to have a supermajority underscores the importance of this kind of a resolution. So even though we've got an escape path later on, um, at the very least, it's an important symbolic moment to say that, hey, we're okay with taking on a million dollars of debt. So, I think, you know, that's also the reason that the New York State Comptroller says, when you take on debt, it should also be based on a, a long-term capital plan, uh, which, as we've just discussed, is something that, um, it, it's commendable, you know, really, to the staff, uh, for all their effort in, in getting us to this kind of a template. It also has not been in front of the public. That capital plan, I think, should be in front of the public, at least in draft form, so that they know what we're thinking of spending our money on. You know, basically, the question is, if you're gonna take on $1 million of debt this year, maybe another $1 million next year, it looks like. When does this stop? You know, what's the path out of that to make sure that we're kind of stopping the bleeding, in a sense, and not taking on a lot more debt? So we've had, you know, kind of a draft budget for this fiscal year, which is related to that as well. But really, a lot of that has to be revised, given the 24, 25 figures that are appearing in the capital plan. So there's a gap between those two things. Basically, there are a lot of things up in the air right now. And I guess the summary of what I'm saying is that this requires a supermajority vote. It's gonna have to be really super, because I'm not gonna vote for it.
Mm-hmm.
So I appreciate.
And we don't have to go all the way to 950,000.
No, it's just the authorization.
It's just the authorization.
Up to that amount.
And that was a question, Justin. Is there an amount that you would feel comfortable in borrowing?
So I think we're gonna need at least, what, 750? So the problem is, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room. You know, we're adding a couple hundred thousand on top of that for a little bit of padding to go to other kinds of road infrastructure. But really, what we're discussing is either almost just under $1 million or three-quarters of a million. And to me, it doesn't really, like, either way, you kind of need, my impression is that I would need a better plan to really vote in either of those figures.
Okay. I mean, I think that we don't have to go to the full range, and as you said, so this is just simply enabling us.
It's enabling you to take the borrowing up to that amount. Doesn't mean that's what you have to take. If you go to Bernie Donnie and you say, you know what, things are looking great, we just want a half mil. Fine.
And we just closed out a bond for how much? Or almost closed out.
It was down at 400,000.
400 or 450?
Yep.
So again, Justin, because this is just kind of opening the door, right? This is basically just opening the door for an option to take out what we need. What is your concern about? I mean, we haven't taken it yet, right? It's just giving you the option to do that.
So my concern is that, you know, so we can talk about taking less out and take half a million, but we might need the whole thing. You know, I don't really feel, without the plan, you can't really.
So you're saying you don't want to do this until we have more of a plan?
The next budget meeting is a really, I think will be a pivotal meeting in that we're getting this first draft of the capital plan. We have a lot of big-ticket items for '24, '25 in front of the public for the first time. We're discussing those in a meeting. And we're making some big changes to this year's tentative budget, too, based on the outcome of that discussion. And that's gonna start to clarify the path towards stopping the bleeding of taking $1 million in debt on every year.
So what would be the problem if we waited till after the next meeting? Would there be a problem?
Can I, before we answer that question, I'd like to just chime in. Because I actually, and I'm just looking at it from a different side. I think we have to be ready. We have to be ready. We know that we probably will have to bond something, whether it's 300,000, 400,000, you know, whatever this, it comes back to us. That's our determination and our fiscal responsibility. I'm comfortable voting on this resolution tonight on behalf of our village because I think it at least sets us up to be able to do something, to do capital improvements in our village. It's not committing us to $1 million this year and $1 million next year. That is not the strategy, I don't think, of this board. I think it's just enabling us to, when we can, get to those next steps and issue a bond. And I'm comfortable voting for this resolution. So to answer your question.
Yes, what were the?
Um, the problem with doing that, okay? GPI's coming in, they're getting closer and closer to being done with their engineering for the project. The hope is to do construction in the spring, early summer. There's timetables with the borrowing. By the time you get this to age, it has to go through two steps. The public has a chance to challenge the bond resolution. So you have 30 days in the one, and then I think it's additional, so only this 14 or 21 days on the next one. After that happens, that's when you say, okay, we're ready. You tell Bernie Donnie again to go ahead and go issue the, look for the bond. They put out bids, that's a process. So this isn't money you're gonna see, like, a week after you.
Sure, so there's a timeline.
There's a timeline.
So what do we make the timeline if it's a week later?
You don't have a week, and I will, and I'm not challenging the board. If you tell me to do it, I'll do it. But I'm not doing this at a budget meeting. This is something the public should be well aware of. It should be at a regular meeting.
Yeah.
You know, it's ready to go. As I said, you don't, you're just starting the process. I mean, you want to have the money ready and available to you when you need it.
And this has been publicly noticed more, you know.
Yep, that's my thing. It's ready to go. And it's not that you're agreeing to borrow the money tomorrow, because you can't. Legally, you can't. We're at least 16 weeks out.
Yeah, and you have public input, so.
Right, this gives the public the chance to challenge it.
Or not. Or agree with it, or support it.
There's reasons why there's so many steps involved while with borrowing. I mean, legally, if we look at our debt, what we're allowed to take out, according to the state, it's like 14 mil. Would I ever recommend the village go more than a million? But I'm just saying, you know, it's like your credit card, maybe you have way too much, you don't need it. But we're dealing with the here and now. And so we can move and be ready if the board decides. And I'm sure Southwood is number one. Because I don't know why it isn't. Because it's been, that's where we are. GPI's doing the engineering. We're just doing the steps to get that road done.
We have a part of it as a grant as well.
Yeah.
To do so.
So can I have a, so last, last meeting, it didn't pass, it was when you had the superintendent.
Correct.
And Lily was abstaining.
I abstained.
So do you have any questions about why, or do you feel better about voting this time around?
You recall, I gave the reason for my abstention, that I did not feel at that time I had enough information regarding our proposed long-term capital plan. I think since that time, we had a budget meeting, we had gone over, were presented with a proposal for a long-term capital plan, at least beginnings of one, that answered the questions from me in that it looks like it's going in that direction and that the board will be actually finalizing and will have a long-term capital plan going forward, which I think was a goal, certainly of the board, of trustees and the board in the past. So seeing that that is going to occur, clearly it's going to occur, that removes my concern for, and the reason I abstained.
Thank you.
That being said, understanding also that if the bond comes before the board and if we have received information in the meantime, either through research for long-term capital spending and/or anything that GPI might present to us, and as far as increase in prices, and we decide, for whatever reason, that if we can't do it this year, that it isn't physically responsible. The board can also, at that time, not just throw the bond. So this is as a preliminary step. I would like to get our ducks in a row and at least have the information.
Be ready to go.
So that we can move forward if we so choose.
Okay.
Yep, yes, Justin.
Something that has come to my attention, based on this capital plan that is not yet in front of the public. I think that we've come a long way in terms of getting the format and everything, but some of the stuff on this list actually causes more concerns to me than where I was at the last meeting. So this is stuff that, you know, maybe has been buried in another budget document, but we're talking about putting into this year's budget, according to this document that I have in front of me. And maybe some of this is from grants or whatever else, but I don't have enough clarity on that. $70,000 for solar roofing on the DPW building. $48,000 for a solar roof on Village Hall. $660,000 for new vehicles, including a new pickup. $45,000 for a fence around the DPW yard against the arboretum. This is stuff that is really, these are decisions by the board. And this hasn't been discussed in a public meeting yet. And it concerns me because we're talking about, you know, this tentative document has a lot of these big-ticket items that we just.
I'd like to speak to that. Thanks for being there. I'd like to speak to that. What we're discussing is a document that has been prepared internally by our departments, our DPW and also Village Hall. So these are, they're the professionals, and so they know sort of the needs of what, going forward, for their departments. So when you're seeing, for example, the solar items in this budget, it's because Steve just told you that we're receiving the points and the funding, that would be direct funding with no matching funds from this village to move forward with maybe solar panels on Village Hall, because we have a flat roof area where you can't see them. It could bring us to being, what is it, a zero-energy building?
Yeah, zero, zero energy, yeah.
Yeah, zero-energy building, which would be incredible, considering we have two oil-burning furnaces running right now, which, again, brings us more points and more money. So when you're looking at the dollar amounts associated with those items, that goes right back into our Climate Smart program. That goes right back into it to get the money. And I don't know if they identified the funding sources or not. They should have.
Well, it does mention that it's part of the Climate Smart Capital Improvement Plan.
Yeah.
I would just, if we're anticipating on expenses based on those revenues from grants or whatever else coming in, I think the board, that's our fiduciary responsibility, is to see if that's viable, just to.
Absolutely. But it's got, we have to start somewhere, and this is what generates the conversation. The board, the final responsibility for the approval of the budget for the Village of Pittsburgh stands with all of us sitting here tonight. Okay, so what you're seeing in what is a draft of a tentative plan and a tentative budget is something coming back to this board for the discussion, which we're going to have on Monday, okay? Starting at 4 o'clock. So I appreciate your thoughts on this, but we can get into much greater detail. We'll also have the superintendent of our Department of Public Works there, and he will be able to work with all of us and give his input professionally. So that's where this is going. Dave, did you have any additional thoughts before we go to vote?
Was, you guys all say for that topic? I don't want to move on too quick.
Well, we have, we have the resolution before.
This one, right?
Yeah, so I guess my comment, so my comment on the bond is the following. There's a whole lot of stuff in the Long-Term Capital Plan, and it may very well be, we don't have to issue debt for all. I want the ability to step back and keep, coined my term, the bailout. You know, I'm not gonna succumb to political pressure on this or any bully pulpit from anybody, right? But I don't mind moving this forward and being prepared to do it. I do think that roadwork is probably the most important infrastructure that we can provide, aside sewer and, you know, safety for our residents. And thankfully, we don't have to spend money on safety. So with roadwork, I was looking ahead in this Long-Term Capital Plan. There's about $5 million roadwork between now and 2008, 2010, and 2029. A million dollars next year to Sutherland, 900,000 plus to Shane Place and other comments on Rand Place, Court and Circle, Heatherhurst. And then 700,000 for possible reconstruction embedded in for Church Locust Maple 2027, 28. It's very possible that the long-term plan is 2024, 25 roadwork, 26, 25, 26 roadwork. And everything else just keeps getting pushed down. And at some point, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. This is next week. I'm gonna fall back on, at least for this bond comment, to what I said at the budget last year. When Justin and I strongly advocated that we create reserves and put the funding of a bond, the payments that we would anticipate for that bond, we set that money aside and we had that into the budget. This year's budget coming up, we have a bond payment embedded in the initial budget that you presented to us, is that correct? Based on the $1 million?
Based on the $1 million, you technically have some money set aside into reserves, which will make a decision at the end of the year, whether you want to put it into reserves or schedule it for wherever, put it into contingency, whatever, to make these payments, yeah.
But for next year's budget, the one that we're working on right now, you do have a line in there for debt costs.
Yes, I do.
For the $1 million. So as it stands now, the 3.7 or whatever that increase was that you had presented, which didn't include anything else in our multi-year capital plan, other than roadwork, I'm gonna fall back on what I said last year, which I've been operating this entire year on, the idea that the road is basically the priority and everything else we'll figure out after. That said, I agree, I would rather not take on more debt without that being done. So while we may want to move forward with the $1 million, and I may like to be able to do that for infrastructure, because all the costs are there, I'm gonna cap my approval on what we absolutely need for Southwood when we get there, unless the Long-Term Capital Plan is in place, that suggests we need more for infrastructure down the road. So with that in mind, I'm okay authorizing it up to the $1 million, knowing that it's not my intent to do it unless we have this plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We have the input from the board. Is there a motion? I'll make, you want, oh, you're on it.
I make a motion to adopt the bond resolution. Do I have a second?
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightfoot?
No.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, review of the refuse district RFP. Thank you, Dorothea.
Yes, thank you.
Can I think some residents, didn't they, some people sent in?
Yes, we did receive three pieces of correspondence. One just came in very late, so it wasn't able to forward it. So I will read it out to the board. Let's see, Mary?
Yes. Make a statement right up front. I'm glad that people have written in, I'm happy to hear always what residents have to say. Like to point out that there were some correspondence we received prior to our last meeting that was not read into the record. One was from Mr. Wexler, who's here this evening. His was not read in, and there was also a resident of Stonegate Lane who also wrote in and her comments were not added. So I'm not saying that, I'm saying on a level, playing field, equal opportunity for all residents. And I am very anxious to hear what people have said, but I would say going forward, I want to be more consistent regarding comments that we receive. I want the board to agree that comments, our policy is to read them aloud when we receive correspondence. And that, I'm gonna make a motion to that.
Okay, well, okay, but I'd like to, hang on, yeah. Dorothea?
Actually, I wasn't reading all the comments. I was only gonna read the one I couldn't forward to the board.
Because the board always receives all the comments for the clarification.
I received it at, by 10, I was in the mist.
Right, that's all that was.
It's the only one I was gonna read. The other two you received in.
And they go, everything goes in the record.
In email form.
Anytime you write in, it goes, you know, regarding an agenda item, it goes to every single board member, and then it is part of the record pertaining to that agenda item. And so anybody can, you know, access it as needed through requests through Village Hall. Things that we receive that the board hasn't had a chance to read, that's when our clerk will read it. So the board has a chance to hear additional input that they have, because it just came in too late for you to be able to read it. That's nothing more than that.
Too late for me to forward it, that's why I was saying, I just was gonna read that one to you, just so you had that comment.
Okay. Sometimes I think the expectation is, when people write to the board, is that they want to comment in public, so to speak. And so they would like their comments to be made public. And we don't have a policy regarding that, no.
Whichever way the board wants it, I can read all the comments received at the meetings, or you can note that they received. We've gone both ways.
Okay. Jeff, as our attorney, is there any comment on that? I mean, I think it's just, as a matter of course.
It's a board, it's whatever the board.
Yeah, I just think as a matter of course, we just, okay, the board members read it.
There's no reason for it to be read aloud.
Okay.
So it automatically becomes part of the record.
Yeah, it's always in the record.
So we're saying, using the phrase, reading it into the record is sort of a mis, almost probably not the right word, but a misapplication, because it's already in the record.
Okay.
As soon as it's received, clerk puts it in the file, it's in the record.
And understand, that's a legal responsibility of the clerk when she receives that information from the public. Yeah.
Certainly, the board is free to have a policy to read it aloud at public meetings. I mean, that's a different thing.
Okay. I think because the discussions that I had with residents who have shown a concern and contacted me regarding any comments that have been, or emails that have been written to the Village Hall for trustees, is that their expectation was that since they couldn't be at the meeting to speak, that they would like their comments to be out in public as well, so. But understand, when they speak, when you speak at a meeting, you do not address the public. You address the board. What I mean is to address the board. Well, the board is addressed through the email being sent that we received. And, you know, I just want to make that clarification. That helps me to answer. Because maybe there was a misunderstanding in terms of what the expectation was.
But again, it's board decision, how you want to handle.
The board is going to adopt a policy to read what is received. There's got to be some length limitation.
You get 20 letters, what do you do?
It could be a 100-page letter.
Yeah. Okay. And that's, that is the answer I was seeking, because the expectation, when you come to a meeting and you're addressing in public. And so if they can't be, I think the. Or they're online, they can address online and public.
Or maybe what Dorothea can say is, so-and-so, so-and-so, and so-and-so had written in and it was sent to the board, so that they're recognized that they had.
Yeah, we can do that.
You know, then this way, it's not long, and they get their email, right, the announcement, so that they know that we know.
That's what the board wants.
That might be easy and less time.
Okay. Thanks.
So just say, who else wrote in? You don't have to say what they wrote, just.
Well, okay, there's one you haven't read, and that's why I was gonna read, and it's very short.
Okay.
Can we clarify whether or not that is what you wish done?
I think that's a good idea, to at least acknowledge who wrote in. Yeah, okay, great.
Do a motion, so it's a policy.
Yeah, I'm making a motion, right? Anybody want to do a motion? So moved.
Well, while we're doing that, can we update the board rules and procedures? I think that would make sense, that that's where that goes, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you could just do this one ad hoc if you wanted to.
Yeah, do that ad hoc, and then a second motion could be to direct the clerk, possibly to amend the rules and procedures to reflect.
Oh, you're on a roll, you're gonna do the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, fine, then.
See, see, open mouth.
My motion is to have the names and addresses of individuals writing in to address the board read into the record, and also to have the clerk amend the existing board rules and procedures to reflect this change.
A second.
Okay, we have a second?
Discussion?
Yep.
Any possibility of ending the requirement for a member of the public to state where they live every single time? Can't we just say village resident or non-resident? There's nothing that requires a member of the public to say what.
It's just a way of identifying who's speaking.
True, but.
With a white, I, I.
Hang on, hang on. We have a motion before us. Can we just deal with the motion before us?
Sure.
You know, because that's something different.
I was gonna amend the motion to include this comment, because if we're updating the rules and procedure, to determine if we actually want to keep that rather archaic requirement.
I do like to know if they're village residents, though. So maybe a village resident or a non-village resident would be fine.
That is all I need.
I'm fine with that amendment.
Because half the time, I don't even know.
Okay, so there's an amendment to the motion. Do you have that, Dorothea?
Sure.
Do we need a second? Well, you made the motion.
I'll sign it.
There, so we have a second from Lisa Coe.
Okay, sure, okay. Are you ready to vote?
Yeah, we are. Roll call, please.
Trustee Liken. Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is this board okay with me reading the letter I couldn't send because of the...
Yeah, please.
Okay. All right, Mary Rubely, well, she says Peg and Bill Rubely.
Rubley.
Okay.
I think it's the Rubleys, right?
Resident, village resident, my husband and I, Peg and Bill Rubely, if you may attend tonight's meeting, if there is a vote on the Refuge project, please add our two yeses. And then we received from Katie Orrin, and I'm going to apologize because I wrote your names left and right, and then just Don Terpikia.
Do I spell two steps and tell them to write in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Noted. Meanwhile...
Back to the bench, we have the RFP.
Yeah. Any thoughts on that? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, really. You turned it around really quickly.
Thank you for Jeff to...
And Jeff, of course, yes, indeed.
Makes me look good.
Okay. No, I think this is great, and we can, I sent out the timeline, you know, Jeff sent us a timeline, and then I sort of consolidated it for our villagers to see sort of, you know, the key dates and how we can move this forward. And so this stuff tonight is putting out the bid so we can see what the costs are to our community for a single hauler to come in and service the community, which we feel would be financially to everyone's advantage.
And I just want to reiterate, there was some confusion. This does not handle commercial refuge pickup, it's only residential.
This is only for residential, the Refuge District is only for residences, not for restaurants, things like that. They have to have their own separate service.
Jeff, I have a question, which is, at what point during the course of any given, or maybe, Dorothea, this is to you, at what point during any given year can a refuge district be created and a refuge bid be accepted?
Any time before May 1st of the next fiscal year, I'm not sure.
Yes. I would have to have, well, there's certain steps that would have to be done prior to May 1st, yes.
Can you start it in the middle of the year? Or does it have to be on the calendar?
To get into the taxes, it has to be an hour of fiscal year.
Yeah, the reason why we're looking at...
No, no, it has to be a month ahead of our fiscal year.
Right.
Finalized.
Right. To go in, to go, because what will happen if this passes is that it goes on the tax bill, so it has to go to the county to be able to...
Recognize that. That's for it to go on the tax bill. But we could do it in the middle of the year and just send out a bill. Is that correct?
No, I don't want to do that.
You don't want to do that.
I'm saying from the clerk's office, we do not want to partake in trash collection services.
It'll be a bill every month?
That's not what I mean.
No, I don't, I'm not interested.
I'm asking, like we do with the sewer, can you send an envelope out, you owe us money for trash?
We could, but I would say your increase, you're going to have a cost increase for us to do that, because then we're going to have to get software, we're going to have to, there's more pieces and parts that I am not...
Sure. So let me ask you then about the sewer. Why is the sewer separated and not part of the tax bill?
Because that was set up long before I came.
Can we set up the sewer on the tax bill?
That is something I am hoping to do and hopefully in the next year or so.
So there's an opportunity to consolidate both the sewer bill and the refuge district, should it move forward on the tax bill?
Correct.
That could be this year, one of the two, or next year, both?
Possibly.
Okay. And you're stating that for cost or functional reasons, we don't do it between now and then? We don't do it in between the tax bill?
No, I would say we are not set up in-house to do it in-house.
Okay. It's true, you can certainly adopt it for the next fiscal year.
You can adopt it for the next fiscal year, but I think what I'm hearing is, there are operational challenges that prevent us from doing it in between each tax year bill.
Correct.
Right? Operational challenges.
Yes.
Right. Okay. So if there is a opportunity, or at least for me, right, where I look at what I've been doing for the village over the last two, three months, and the effort involved in all of these other items, quite honestly, my ability to work through these documents, right, I think is inefficient or insufficient for me to want to move this forward at this time. That said, what I'm hearing is if it doesn't happen now, it can happen next year, and we could consider consolidating the sewer at the same time under the tax bill.
Or we could go ahead with this and get this cost savings to our residents right, you know, this coming fiscal year, because the town already is implementing this, and they've had roughly a 40% reduction per household in hauling costs. So I prefer to not wait a year to, so we can save the money for our residents. I think that's kind of a, you know, it's a good thing to do, and then we can go ahead and just put the sewer, work on this, putting the sewer on the tax bill the following year, because that's simply a wash. There's no cost saving to a resident that way, per se, but this is with consolidating trash removal into a single district. That's my sort of view of that. I mean, I hear where you're going with that, but I don't know that there's an advantage to somehow consolidating both transitions at the same time. I think we need to look at what's advantageous for our residents from a cost standpoint and efficiency for the village.
Appreciate that. Let me ask, this bid, once we put it out there, right, we get responses, and then we make a determination to move forward or not to move forward.
Correct.
Now, I may suggest that I've not gone through all this yet, which I have not, based on the complexity of all the other matters that we've been voting on, like resolutions, the reserves, the bond, right? Working through that bond resolution is insane. That said, if this were to pass, and I just have a couple of comments that in my brief take, I'd like to pull forward. We do not have a refuge district in place currently, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. On page 67 of the minutes, we state, "The village may find it necessary to modify the existing refuge district due to the addition of new services and addresses." We do not have a refuge district, so that is incorrect.
What are we looking at, minutes?
No, the Refuge District bid request.
We talked about it.
Page 67. So modifications required by addition of service addresses on page 67 of the hour.
That's the second page.
Oh.
The second page, I'm sorry, I don't know from the bid perspective, this is the third page of the bid.
Okay, page three.
Page three of the bid.
Page three of, thank you.
What's it under?
Which under the bid?
I think we kept that.
Hang on, they...
I think we kept that for a reason, because the board at any time could determine and change the outlay of the Refuge District, like the commercial. Looking at residential, we could decide that, right now, commercial says that four families is a commercial residence, and the board could decide, you know, or if something happened and when they wanted to change it. So we left it in there to give you some leeway if you needed to expand the district.
It was flexibility.
Shake, is that...
And you need to add more households for the...
Right, if any more households.
You put your hauler on notice to really do it with the same process as the bid.
Yeah, it's just, it's...
So that's not suggesting we have a refuge district in place now?
No, no.
Should we have said existing residential refuge district, then made it more clear?
No, the Refuge District is already residential, and there's going to be a list of...
Right, in case we have a list, let's say somebody was met, an address was left out in importantly between me and the assessor, it was giving us a little room in case there was a problem.
Instead of the word "the," the word "and" may make more sense. The village may find it necessary to modify an existing refuge district.
Well, actually, this is written after the, after the signing of the contract and the creation of the district, so this springs into effect only when there is...
When there is.
Right, when there is.
Thank you. Very helpful, good. All right, the other question, this would be on the next page.
Which floor?
After number four, that paragraph there, second sentence, it says, "The contractor..."
Breaker.
"...shall defend at the contractor's own expense all suits which may be brought to recover damages arising from the contractor's performance, including any and all suits brought against the village." All right, makes sense, and we're going to require them to defend the trust, but if a resident sues for damages or requests damages, I'm not sure we want the contractor to automatically defend a suit. It'd be nice if they just simply said, oh, yeah, here you go, have some money.
Well, that might be...
I think that's...
What was that, Jeff?
Can't do it if we're going to have the contractor out of hook for it. They're going to want to be able to contest the legitimacy of the claim that we used to be able to talk.
The shell, though, wouldn't you want the contractor to be able to not defend and choose not to defend it, and to accept the expenses of their own and then pay for it? So maybe the contractor...
I think they always have that right. I think they...
All right, well, it just seemed a little definitive to me, that they would have to defend against the suit.
Like we're urging it?
Yeah, like we're urging them to defend themselves against a suit brought by a resident.
If there's going to be an excess liability, we certainly would want them to defend it.
Yeah.
Well, against us, so in the follow-up of that sentence, I think holds true, which is any suit brought against us, city officers, agents, or employees, but if, they're just, I don't know, okay.
I would say that they would look at, and if it's a couple hundred dollars damage, they're probably going to pay it, because letters are expensive, sorry.
Right, which then suggests that they don't defend it.
Well, what word would you use instead of shell?
I don't know. That's kind of me.
The reason you, the reason you used the word shell is so that you can force them to do it.
You force them to take the action.
You say you made on this big argument, I don't feel like it today.
Well, what if you separated the sentences? So you said, "The contractor can defend at the contractor's own expense all suits which may be brought to recover damages arising from the contractor's performance." The contractor shall defend, right, any and all suits brought against the village officers, agents, or employees. So you could have...
What is that bias? What does that do?
In case they just sue the contractor, they don't have to defend themselves by requirement of our bid.
Well, part of the defense is a settlement, what's the difference?
I mean, I don't care, on a matter of the other's will, which has changed.
Does anybody seem to care?
Just started out less paid up than the contractor shell.
Unless settled.
Right, something like that, yeah.
It's kind of coming out, okay.
I think we're into the territory of, reality would dictate, if they get a claim coming in for whatever it is, they'll make a judgment call, decide whether or not to settle it. If that claim includes us, we will not let them do that.
So what you're suggesting is, we would have recourse if we needed it, but if we choose not to, we don't have to act on that privilege. So this is basically embedding a privilege, that they can choose if they wanted to settle it, and that we would never go against them for that, so why not just keep it as is?
I don't care if we change it either.
No, that's fine, I understand your point.
It basically gets them.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other comments on this? Yeah, Justin?
Yeah, I appreciate the effort, thanks for preparing the RFP. My comments here are largely the same as the ones that I've stated in past meetings. You know, I see that this could be a really great thing for the village, that we're taking on additional responsibilities by saying that we're going to take care of everybody's residential garbage by assigning a contract to a private provider. But I think that it's a non-trivial undertaking to do that, and I think it's kind of an aspirational thing of the village to be doing that, which I feel should be coming after setting in place things like the budget and the capital plan. I know it might not be the most convenient to do that, and it might disappoint some people, but I personally just think that my fiduciary responsibilities are more on the side of getting those details in place right now, so I don't support pushing this forward at this juncture.
Thanks for your input. Okay, Lisa?
You know, I'm all for this. I think this is a simple thing that we could do to make the quality of life of residents and visitors, and the wear and tear in our streets, and everything else that goes along with multiple garbage trucks coming down our roads, something that could, you know, be mediated. I think this is the number one thing I've heard from residents, they want this. So much work has been done already. I don't think reading, I mean, how many is it? Eight pages, right? Eight pages compared to what we're trying to budget is something that's going to really tax us. I think that we need to bring this to residents and hear from them. I mean, without doing this, we can't have an open meeting or a public forum for us to really hear. I mean, I've heard already that this is what they want, and I would, I really am here to act for what the residents want.
Okay, thank you. Well, any additional?
No, just that I do not have any objections to sending out RFPs. I think it's part of our process that is necessary, doesn't guarantee that the board, after hearing residents or having discussions or receiving the bids and reviewing them, will agree to anything, will agree to the Refuge District, that remains to be seen. But we do need to collect the information first in order for our residents to make informed decisions, and to that end, I think that an RFP is part of the process that we want to move forward with.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're elected, I'm just going to weigh, yeah, up, yes.
We have a natural job, do we currently get certificates of insurance from all the different companies that are coming through the village? No, because you're not paying them, right? But in this case, would you...
I think we get those, because we have a licensing fee, and it's reviewed, so we get the...
They can't just show up and collect.
Okay, you get certificates of insurance, and then you'll still maintain those certificates of student rights.
There's a whole licensing mechanism for lawyers.
Does it give us any more insurance by taking out that we're...
It's a cost-cutting mechanism.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the intention. Just a brief comment from me, you know, we're elected officials, we're here to transact business on behalf of our village and improve the quality of life for our residents. I do support this 100%. I'd like to think we can walk and chew gum at the same time, we can do multiple tasks. We've had a lot of the heavy lifting already done, as Lisa said, and great work done on behalf of our attorney and our staff, and I'd like to move forward. So we've all had a chance to weigh in. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move forward on the Refuge District RFP. Drive a second.
Our second. Roll call, please.
Discussion.
Oh, act of discussion, okay.
I just simply wanted to make a point that I am generally in favor of the Refuge District. I legitimately have been spending lots of time doing other things. I do think that the priority items that we have are being a little misplaced and misdirected in as far as the communications from Village Hall that is specific more to the Refuge District than the long-term capital plan, the millions of dollars that we're taking on in debt and the budget process. I'd rather have had this been at a different time and of a different priority. That said, again, I think this is something that we need to look at the bids as they come back. There are many residents here who own homes, who don't have year-round service. For them, it is a cost increase. There are residents here who share totes. For them, is it a cost increase, right? So it's not always going to be as easy as it saves money for everybody. On average, I do believe that the full-time resident here will save money, and I think it's good to look at the bids, but again, in that I've not had sufficient time relative to the other things that we're working on to review this, but we'll be accordingly.
Okay, thanks so much again for your input. Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall. Trustee Coe.
Yes.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
No.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd also like to say, thank Laura Don, she's been a lot of the...
Oh, and Laura Don, too. Thank you for bringing that up. Shout out to Laura Don. Okay, so next up, we have the continuation of a public hearing that was opened at our last meeting for the proposed local law to override the tax levy limit. So the first thing I'd like to do is to make a motion to open, or to continue, the public hearing.
One second.
Trustee Marshall. Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion continues.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Or anybody online?
Lisa, we got a Q and A. I'm sorry, this was a comment for the previous action that came in and I missed it.
I would like to hear it. Should we hear it after the close of the hearing? Right? We should hear it after the hea...
Yep.
Because this hearing is specific to an agenda item, and then we could hear it. Okay.
I apologize.
Just as protocol. Okay, any other comment on the proposed override? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
And make a motion to close it?
I'm sorry, I would just, I believe that this just has to be done before we adopt a budget or this could actually come later. Personally, I would be fine just carrying this over to another meeting.
You want to keep the hearing open again?
I would keep, yeah, I don't see a reason that we have to act on it. Is there one legally or procedurally?
I know concerns continuing a public hearing over multiple meetings because I think you lose that legitimacy of the public hearing notice after a while.
It's legally permissible.
Well, if it's legally permissible, then we can do it.
You don't have to do anything more, right? You don't have to, you've already.
Do we need a motion to?
Pass the local law.
Well, we could pass the local law. That would actually.
But you've got to keep the hearing, if you keep the hearing open, you can't pass the local law.
Right.
Yeah, why don't we put it to a vote to keep the public hearing open? Or not?
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion? Is anybody making a motion?
Justin, you want to make it?
Or do we want to do a motion to close it and deny it?
We need a meeting and a time. So, let's see, that would be March 26th?
March 12th.
March 12th, right, at 6 o'clock. All right, I'll make a motion that we leave the public hearing open and continue it at 6 o'clock on March 12th, 2024.
Our second. Discussion?
I have just one question, which is when we have a budget before us, it requires all three of us to approve. If we go over, what is it, 2%? If we go over 2%, it's going to take three of us to approve that, right? It's the same three people who approve us going over the tax cap. If we don't approve the tax cap, we're clearly not approving a budget over 2%. So it's a little bit of a principle, cart before horse kind of thing. Let's figure out the budget and then figure out if we need to go over. So why pass a law to let us go over unless we absolutely plan to anyway?
Nikon, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please go ahead. I've said it plenty of times. Maybe you all can weigh in.
I thought I interrupted Trustee Marshall.
Go ahead. I was just asking. I was simply going to say, what we're really doing is introducing operational requirements to the process a little bit, right? Meaning, in the end, we're either going to approve or deny the tax cap and we're either going to approve or deny the budget. So I think, to a degree, yes, there's a little effort here, but it is a principled effort saying, why are we going to approve this unless we know we're going to go over it?
Because a future audit may reveal that you've gone over it unintentionally. And so this is a Nikon recommendation. This local law is a Nikon recommendation to protect you in the event that some future audit determines you were over by 1.01%.
There are multiple steps.
This is a cover your financial barrier move.
Yes.
Yeah, and this is a Nikon recommendation to the villages.
I think sometimes I do these recommendations and I think they're just telling us this so we can go over the cap if we need to or not. But to this point on the audit, even if we decide to stay under the cap, you know, 1.9 or 1.99, having this law in place protects us from an audit item if we happen to go over by 1.01.
From an oops. And the reason why Nikon came up with this recommendation is that they saw that it was happening periodically to villages. So, you know, they responded to what was happening through audits where they're getting dinged on, you know, a mistake within, you know, within audits. So they don't just make the recommendation to make it. I mean, they receive the feedback.
And there's many steps involved to correcting that when you go over.
Right.
Setting up a reserve, doing all kinds of things because of it. So to.
So even if you had zero, you'd suggest and Nikon suggests.
And we have done that in the years. We have not done that taxes.
So the checks and balances of going over 2% really falls on the budget approval and this is somewhat irrelevant.
It's just protecting.
A reasonably principled statement like, let's look at the budget first.
That's all it is.
We've always done it as a January just to get it done, just to protect us when we got the budget, whether the budget's going to go over the cap or not, just in case something ever occurred. And they do come in and just, so you know, they come in and they do audit the tax cap to make sure what we did, if we went over, did we have the thing in place? So we have had two of those audits, yeah.
So if we do not pass it hypothetically and we come in with a negative one tax rate, tax rate, like, so we go down, they'll still take that, the fact that we didn't pass it, and say, let's go audit the village.
Yes, they will still audit the village no matter what.
That's annoying.
It is very annoying, but that's what the councilors want.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out some information.
So for clarification, are we keeping this open until the budget meeting or the next trustee meeting?
Well, we still can close it if we want to.
The motion right now is the next trustee meeting.
So that's the 12th.
That's the motion you're putting forth. What was the date again?
The 12th.
March 12th.
6 o'clock.
So I understand the reasoning behind approving this. I guess my thinking is that rather than just making this entirely procedural, I'd like it to be based on some semblance in the budget that we've discussed. And I feel like we don't really have that at this point. At the next meeting, we will. And I, you know, I think that if there's a reasonable chance for going over based on a budget that we have discussed, then great.
Okay, that's fine. So we have a motion on the table, right?
Yeah, we've had discussion. Was there a second on the motion?
There was.
Right, because then we went to discussion. So Lily's second. Okay, so we need the roll call.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Heidi Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up.
Okay, let's go back to the refuse district because now we have two residents with comments.
Oh, that's right. Thank you for the reminder, yeah.
If the board's, okay.
Yes, no, we'd all agreed to hear that. We just didn't know.
Okay, so first one is from Gabriel Diaz, a village resident. I think Lisa and the mayor make excellent points. Louis Ford is not a permanent decision and I don't understand the unnecessary obstruction by dissenting trustees who are the same trustees who raised our taxes for almost 8% last year. David Wells, village resident. I have a question about the refuse district as well. My name is David Wells and I'm a village resident. Dave Marshall brought up the point of per-time residents and residents that share totes, so the refuse district may not save them money. Does he have statistics regarding the proportion of residents that fall under these two categories versus full-time residents who pay for their collection individually? Are his comments anecdotal?
Anecdotal, and generally I defer to full-time residents, but any resident who votes here is a resident who votes here, whether or not they're here full-time or not. So it should take into consideration, but it's a great question, David.
Okay, that was it?
That was it. I apologize to the rest.
No, that's great. We heard their input, so thank you. Okay, next up, review of the proposed rental registry law. Thanks again for all the good work.
Steve, this is, and again, Jeff, this is simply authorizing you to create the permit and then we'll review it before it actually hits the streets. So what end, Jeff, we talked last time about this, with regards to the rollout of this, I think, and this speaks to my question earlier, Steve. Let's say we took this in and then we have 30 days from the date that the permit's going to get reviewed. How do you space them out? Right, how do you space them out?
Change it to 90.
Yeah, so I think we've got 90 days, but I also think you can, how did you say it? They can apply, but then you can accept the application over some length of time. So it's when the permit's issued, so as you do them, my understanding is that you can stagger the dates of.
To be honest, I kind of want to take a little stock, you know, I mean, since I've had discussions. I think there could be a condition 30 days.
All of it?
Yep. You're only talking, you're only talking 25 or 30.
Okay.
Totally, in a village. And I don't think that's unreasonable within a 30-day period. You're a month period to game it, permit will walk through the house.
Okay. Great.
Well, it's 90 right now.
So we're giving you a last time.
Well, you could complete it earlier.
Yeah, you can complete it when you want.
It just gives you some flexibility.
I just think the larger you stretch it out, the more confusing it would be.
Okay.
It's easier for me if I condense it.
45 days?
A shorter period.
Split it.
We'll go with your recommend, what would you like to change?
You were going to say something.
We haven't passed it. We can change it whatever we want.
No, I was just saying, maybe you just go to 45 days, just for a little leeway. That's all.
You've got it at 90 right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say 45 would be a better.
Like if you're out sick, you know, something.
It keeps everybody on the same plane.
No, that's a good point.
It can be adopted with that modification.
We have to start the public hearing.
Yeah, you're not voting on this tonight. All you're doing is setting up.
Public hearing with a.
Whatever corrections you, it's bringing it back for your review and setting up that public hearing.
One of the other topics that I think, as we put this on any agenda, it's good for the public to know, the rental permit is required effective the date of filing of the chapter with New York. No owner shall cause, permit or allow the occupancy of the residential rental property without a valid residential property permit, though the requirements of the section shall not apply to the rental of residential property by an owner for 15 days or less. So as it stands right now, 15 days, two weeks, you can basically rent your place out and you don't need a permit.
Well, it's like at the golf tournament.
Yeah, there's a golf tournament, right? If there's two golf tournaments, we're out of luck if you're doing it, well, one week at a time. But, you know, the point is 15 days is where we stand and then after that, the supplies and you need a permit. Of anything that we communicate to residents moving forward with this sort of thing, I think that's sort of square one, right, which is.
Is that 15 days in a calendar year?
That's not true. It's not in one lump. It's 15 days in a calendar year.
In total.
In total, 15 days calendar year.
Yep.
Right? And I don't know if it says that effective the date of the filing of this chapter, and it's 15 days or less annually. Is it presumed in law that annually is the start? Or is it a fiscal year or is it, no, it is truly annually, January, December. Okay, good. Yeah, so it's 15 days per year. And that's the type of dial that we can adjust down the road and consider. But this is one of those very important, I think, items for residents to know.
Any other comments on this? Justin, anything from you on this? Okay, Lily?
No.
Lisa, anything you want to add in? No, I think it was good work.
Long term coming.
Yeah, no, I think this is good for us. I really do.
Okay, so then we need to make a proposal to send this to public hearing? Is that what we need to do?
And we need, what's the date? March 12th at 6:00 p.m.? March 12th at 6:00 p.m.? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to send the rental registry law to public hearing on March 8.
12.
12 at 6:00 p.m.?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up is the resolution for New York State AIM funding. And AIM is, you know, it's Aid and Incentives for Municipalities program and it's been in effect for decades really in New York State. And it's money that all of the different municipalities receive from Albany that is, can be used, I think, it's not just for roadwork like chips. It can be used for a number of different things and it just helps particularly smaller municipalities, gives them a little bump to their budget. Although for us, it's not that big a bump because there has not been any increase in AIM funding and you can see it in the resolution. We're not going to read the whole resolution, but I think it's 40%. Yeah, it hasn't even kept up with any kind of inflation. And there hasn't been an increase for over 15 years. So this is really a resolution that's going out to all the villages to go back to the governor to say, we really need you to bring this up, you know, within reason for all municipalities. That's appropriate, that factors in inflation and, you know, cost of living increases. And right now, what do we, we receive only $9,000?
$9,419.
Go team, $9,419. What's some of the uses that we've used AMES funds for in the past?
AIM just goes into the general revenues and so it's used for anything. It could be snowplop pay, it could be.
Yeah, it just goes into our general fund.
It's part of the general revenue. But yeah, that number has not changed.
So I can say right up front, I support this. I'd like to see, you know, Albany really take a good, hard look at this and really increase this funding for not only our municipality, but all the other municipalities. You know, we need help.
State aid you receive.
Yep. So any other thoughts or comments from the board? Yep, Dave?
So I really kind of detest the idea of residential taxes getting rolled up to New York State and then being appropriated down to the villages and then needing to go beg for it. Right? This is pretty discouraging, this sort of program. Generally speaking, I want to say no. I don't want to ask for more aid because if they give it to us, they're going to raise New York State taxes to get it. And we don't need more taxes, right? If we want to make roads, we need $9,000 or $10,000, raise the taxes by .02 or .03, like be direct. It's us raising your taxes. It's not New York State charging us whatever the tax rate is being one of the highest, you know, state income taxes. And frankly, I'm a progressive guy, so I sort of do like the cycling of money. But I don't like begging for, for something that just goes to our general fund where if we want money for the general fund, we just raise taxes. So to that end, I'm still going to vote for it because frankly, it'd be a political disaster if I didn't. But boy, it pisses me off. And that's it.
Well, thank you for that.
Yeah, we appreciate the input, yeah. Anybody else? Any other comments on this?
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for New York State AIM funding. Do I have a second?
Second.
You okay? Roll call.
Okay, Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. I apologize. Residents are a little slower getting back to me. I think they're typing. We have another comment regarding the rental registry.
Oh, sure.
Justin Bleestrip, who is resident, regarding rental registry, can you improve the definition of rental property so it involves renting? As written, hiring a babysitter or dog sitter would require a registry. See Troy New York definition. Can you add applicant shall designate who is the contact for emergencies?
They're not paying us. We're paying them, the dog sitter. I mean, they're not paying us to dog sit.
Okay, well, thanks for the comment, though. You know, thanks for weighing in on that.
Well, let's ponder that for a second. So Jeff, any response? What is he exactly saying and should we? Well.
You're hiring a dog sitter rental?
That's like hiring a cat trainer or a painter or whoever it is. Or a cleaner.
They're not living there. That's a private agreement with someone.
The definition of tenant is pretty clear.
Ten, any person or persons other than the owner or the owner's immediate family occupying a residential rental property as herein above defined.
It's a DNA, isn't it?
What was it?
Define it as a DNA.
Oh, thanks, good catch.
But residential rental property, real property or any portion of such real property which is occupied or used for habitation by a person or persons other than the owner or owner's immediate family. And so habitation, do we define or is it just presenting?
I guess there's an exchange of money in there because I think that would.
Little point of distinction. It's a difference that the person that's dog sitting is not paying.
It's what I'm saying. They're not paying there.
They're being paid. They're not living there.
No, some people do have dog sitters that live there. I mean, for the week that they're gone.
No, but hang on, if they're not making it their primary address as a tenant.
Right, right, right. And they're not paying.
They're temporarily there under some kind of an agreement.
A job. They're doing a job.
Yeah, I don't see. It's not a tenancy.
Shoe watch the job, right. They're not, they're not paying them.
But hang on, they're not forwarding their mail to the address. They're not, this isn't their primary address. When you rent something and you live there, that's your address.
Right, so he's saying, does that representative in the language?
I don't think, I think the language, maybe Jeff has other thoughts on that. I don't know. I think we're parsing.
I don't know if we're parsing here.
Maybe come up with another way then to say it that it's a little more definitive.
Do we need to say something about an exchange of a payment for the property? Like you're renting it, another which is paying to live there?
That's what rent is.
Well, that's what you would think, but do we have to define that? Rent is defined by paying for where you're paying the property's thing?
Rent has a common definition that we all know.
Well, I think that's what he wants it defined with rent.
Instead of just occupying.
Yeah, what about which is rented or rented? So instead of occupied or used, what if we just said which is rented?
I think, yeah, so.
Throw rented in?
Replacing the term occupying a tenant with something that more clearly specifies the the role of that person there as paying for occupancy rather than being paid to provide a service. So residential real property, real property or any portion of such real property which is rented or habitation by a person or persons other than the owner or the owner's immediate family.
There you go. That's good.
Habitation is the big binding factor.
Yeah, who forwards it, which is occupied or used for habitation. So when it's occupied or used for habitation.
Habitation was in there.
It is, but so if it was occupied or used for habitation, right, that could have been the dog sitter for more than 15 days, in which case it would have needed a rental permit. So to that point, which is rented for habitation. And in this case, there's no rent being used and it will clean it up.
So we're not splitting.
Yeah, you're being more specific.
Because that's actually, it's more specific and.
Okay, so that's a little more career.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we, Jeff, do you have language and can you read it back and then we need a motion?
No, I know we're just replaying for this.
So we're tweaking.
Occupied with rental.
Yes, okay, we're good?
Yeah, so not occupied or used, it's going to say which is rented for. So skip occupied or used and just put invented.
Oh, delete, delete occupied.
So there are two different things. There's tenant and tenant is defined as occupying any person or persons other than the owner or owner's immediate family occupying a residential rental property as herein up here defined. immediate family occupying a residential rental property as herein up here defined. Yes, yeah, I think I would fix that. And then you could also possibly change the occupied or used thing in the previous definition.
In the residential rental property.
Yes.
So residential rental property and tenant definitions could be improved to where we're using the word rented instead of occupied or occupied or used.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that there's others.
Mr. Blaischek talked in another question.
Okay, but, you know, we did cover the item. One more question, you know?
Well, I mean, these are code directions that we're giving to our attorney. I think it's pretty, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Another question. Can you add requirements to multifamily dwellings to bring them up to code? For example, add soundproofing between units. They should not be pre-existing non-conforming forever.
Well, we're talking about a rental registry, I think, at this point. That's something different and we can appreciate the thought on that, so.
The international code area and financial levels in which you can report somebody to upgrading a property to modern codes.
Yep. Thank you.
You can't use this permitting process as a way to whip into compliance. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
I thought you were reviewing this for the purpose of checking for code compliance. Yes, but only for safety, life safety, not for structural.
Noise, right.
You know, like separation between apartments or, you know, insulation, things like that. No. I'm looking for code violation for safety.
And against zoning and other things like that.
Yeah, and that's just in, you know, unfit condition.
This is public safety issue.
Yeah.
It also includes zoning impermanently and all of that. So basically, is it near code and is it safe?
Basically, once it allows me into the door, yes, for any violation under our code or international code.
Okay. Great. Last up, member items. And first one is trustee Coe.
All right, you guys, let's get this moving. We need to do some plantings at the little corner. I want to get something approved from the voice that I can send it off to the state, which you know how long that's going to take because Zach says ideally, and Bristol's, I called them for just some information, said ideally for us to get this started, get the plantings in March, April, so that we can get them nice and set for the season or for the all four seasons. So I sent to you, do you guys, do you have the form? So Bob Corby called me and I had some suggestions, which I talked to Bristol's about. I'm looking for plants that are hardy, plants that are not going to block view, so they don't get very tall, they don't get only about, at the tallest three feet. Specifically, something that's going to give us some color and some texture all year round. So that's kind of why I went holly. Holly stays green. Also, I went evergreen. But Bob said blue spruce gets really big. I have one that doesn't, but that's okay. So I changed. You didn't get my email with my new stuff on there, did you? Okay, so all I did was I.
Is that what you had Alan Zandier?
Yes. Oh, do you have it? Okay, perfect.
Oh, it's the specific.
Yeah, so Bob recommended or suggested that we put a lilac because it's something that, you know, represents Rochester and it's something that would go well in that area. So I added the lilac in there. I also changed out the blue spruce for juniper. Juniper's a very low growing evergreen. And then I also put a wild rose in there, the two wild roses. Because, and they're also a long chain place. If you've seen, we have a whole bunch of wild roses. They're very hardy. They'll pop in some color. So that's kind of my plan. The bench is something that I think really interested to talk to you about, but that's where we are planning to put the bench, but that's going to be a separate application for the state. So I'd like to get something there for them to approve. And if we need to shift things around a little bit, we can do that. I know either I'll come and have a comment. Hostas are something that we can plant in the front that will go underground and will just come out when we want them in the spring and summer, early fall. So I just wanted to see if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, my question is, will the placement of the bench alter or affect what you would like to see happen there?
I don't think so.
So if the state gives back to us and says, you can't have a bench there, how does that change?
I think we'll.
Does anything?
Yeah, I think we'll shift the plants over a little bit. Yeah, just fill it in. It's really all about trying to, you know, make this area less metal and more welcoming as a center of our village. I mean, the rest of our village looks beautiful. We have these watered pots and plants and that's just this big plain metal area.
I guess for us to make a decision, I think, I'm guessing that we would like need an estimate, a cost estimate?
Yep, so I did, I called Bristol's for that. He has, the gentleman I spoke to said that each planting is on average about $49 for two court bucket, I guess.
And that's with them planting it?
No, that's about.
Okay, so the sale of the plant?
Yes.
Is $49 and then the DPW would have to plant that?
Now, also having discussion with Mr. Newcomb in the past, he had agreed to do the planting and help us out with that. I haven't gotten back to him because we were kind of waiting. So we might get some support from him as well if he would like to.
Okay.
To help us with the cost of that.
So what you might be looking for from the board is a certain expenditure of money that we don't necessarily have to identify the exact plants at this time. Just if he would like to do plantings, I don't think he cares what.
Correct.
Plants, do they?
Not really.
They just want to know how high.
Yes. And they don't really care specific location. I mean, they're probably going to, they're going to want to make sure that we don't cover manholes and area of access, which, you know.
Yeah, they need access to the signal box. And has DPW seen this? Has Zach seen this?
Zach has seen the first one. I don't know if he's seen the second one.
Yeah, so they would need to take a look at that.
But it doesn't, yeah, and I'll show Zach. It doesn't look that much different. I think we just changed a couple of plants around. And again, DPW, when they come and put them in, can shift things based on, you know, if they dig and the roots are, you know, if they can't get a good hole for the roots, you know, they'll make holes.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff under there. And the other thing too is the consideration of the tree going up, our Christmas tree with plantings that are in that area as well. And that's something that we should definitely bet with DPW. Okay, so this flexibility as to which plants are being chosen. So what you're talking about is.
So it looks like about seven plants. Seven times 50 is.
$600 is what your request to the void is?
That's yes.
Should we talk about that in the budget? Yeah, why don't we talk about that?
Put it into this year? Can we put it in this year?
Yeah, but I'd like to weigh in a little bit too because I love the idea of some, you know, the bench and I'm like, thank you. You know, I kind of think that it's an opportunity, especially with, you know, Mr. Newcomb, you know, being excited about this as well, to really look sort of more holistically at the site because it's in front of an historic property. You know, maybe it could be an opportunity also to get some scouts involved to help us make it more of like a little community project. And, you know, whatever sort of down here, maybe we put on the other end because the building has a formality to it. And so, and I was thinking too, and it's too bad, we just had a meeting with Vicky Prophet, our historian, but I know that she would have some ideas maybe to help take a look sort of historically and how the plants could be laid out.
Yeah. And I contacted both the little house, the historic house, and I contacted the Women's Club of Pittsburgh to try to help me with the history. I also talked to a couple of other New York State botanical about the history of what could be there. And they were very helpful. I'm surprised. I think it's because I'm not being that elaborate. I mean, you know, holly and the wild roses, which are already in the village. I mean, it's not like I'm doing that much, so it didn't seem like that they had that much input. But I agree with you on trying to keep it in keeping with the historic building.
Yeah, no, because I think this is really cool. You know, I don't know. Lilly, what are you, me giving? You know? I, part of me is saying, let's wait until, to see whether the bench goes there. That's one little thing. But I understand that regardless of that, you would still like to see some softening of that corner. And that was the issue. But as far as with plants, that can be determined later. Ideally, yes, we would rather get them in ground in April. It may not. It may not happen. We might have a snow problem in April.
Right, well, the good thing is.
Well, that's true.
This is.
I'm thinking our winter in April.
What I'm asking is just, can I just present it to New York State DOT and see if they'll just even say yes? And if they say yes, then they've said yes for this year and next year.
I think there's no harm in doing that in general. Let's find out if they're even going to say it. Because it's my thought anyway, so.
And really quick on the bench, Lilly. We're still, they kicked it back. They want two applications, ones for the putting it in, ones for it to be there. It's a right away permit. So I have it re finalized, it's going out tomorrow. So we're still waiting on that, just so it's not lost in the thing, but we're still working on that.
I know these things take a long time.
That's kind of why I wanted to get this going. Who knows? I might not even get this for three months.
Yeah, they give things back and then it's, it's not one application.
Yeah, it's going to be beautiful. It just seems like a lot of work for a month.
Okay.
Okay.
Lilly has a member item. Yes, I do. I would request that the board set a date for our next discussion on short-term rental. We had talked about setting a date for a workshop. I would like to request that the board come up with a date for that. I know that we are at a hard stop. The end of the moratorium is when?
I know, we're all like, I'm going to, I'm going to. At the moment, I'm thinking.
Oh, when was it?
You got to check the records.
I guess.
So this was on our work list for tomorrow to give the board a hard date.
Yes, a time.
By which you either have to extend the moratorium or pass.
Thank you.
Or send a local law to public hearing. They both have to go to public hearing, so.
Okay.
But we wanted a workshop.
We'll send that out tomorrow, Dorothy Wilson.
Thank you. Okay, and then we can, and then you can pull the board maybe for a date?
A workshop.
Yeah.
For a workshop.
Because I know that was the next step.
Is there, can I just add a little fun into this? Is there any way that when we send out dates, that maybe we can do a little lunch in lunch? Like a lunchtime and bring lunch and just.
How civilized.
Enjoy ourselves a little bit.
Do you have for the short-term rentals?
Yeah, for short-term rentals. I like lunches.
Who's available during the lunch hour?
Well, you have to eat, David.
I usually am.
I am.
Yeah, I could.
Lilly, are you usually available for the lunch hour? If you may pause for just a second.
I'm expecting me at this meeting.
I don't think we.
Yep.
This meeting?
The first time we talked about it.
Short-term rentals?
Only if you have a lunch meeting. Only if you could do a lunch meeting.
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Only if you're hungry.
As long as I'm not.
Okay, so we've got a budget meeting at 4:00 next Monday, so let's skip that. What if we were to look at?
Wednesday the 6th, you're looking at?
Wednesday the 6th.
I'm not here.
Okay.
Thursday the 7th.
1:30.
What month are we in?
Certainly do.
11:30?
12 to 1.
March.
March 7.
7.
Or March 8th to Friday.
I'm not available. On March 7th?
March 8th.
Oh, she's here on the 8th.
Do the 7th.
You want to do the 7th?
Yes.
Thursday next week.
So what time you want to start this?
Noon.
I know.
You available?
Yes, yes, I need to come here now.
I don't.
I don't think it's personally, I don't think it's necessary, Jeff.
I think we would just be starting in, right? We'd just be starting in.
Let us get our mojo going.
Yeah, I think we got it.
Unless you want a lunch.
And run some general comments.
This is a workshop open to the public?
That'd be, we're meeting.
Yeah, because we're all meeting.
But.
We would notice it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, so.
But we won't have, we won't open the discussion to the public, which is a public hearing. It's just us talking amongst ourselves.
And they can watch us chew.
I mean, we can take comments, doesn't have to be a public hearing.
We can.
We can. I think almost for these initial meetings, not that I ever want to turn down public comment, but it may be best that it comes in writing in advance rather than, you know, some of these very early.
Right, because they're going to have their opportunity for, for public hearing.
Yeah, we need to gather our thoughts, right?
We gotta hammer out where we think we're going to fall.
I agree.
And the public, I think.
Did we say noon?
Uh.
Yeah, we did.
Am I getting lunch or is anybody bringing their lunch?
All right, can.
She can order lunch.
We made a decision later, but I think so.
Okay, we've got the date, you know, we're moving along, okay. We've got, we're good, okay. Okay, any other member items?
I have a couple.
Oh, okay. Yep.
All right, so my question is, Jeff, with regards to reserves and others, do we want to have a land acquisition reserve? If we're going to make reserves, at some point I would like to consider acquiring land. This could be years down the road. Is it worth creating it and having to be dormant and, or should we just create it when we think we know we need it later?
I would create it later, so people, you know, you know, you might lose track of that with some future work, owning a land acquisition reserve.
And then they do. Okay, sounds good.
Jeff, next question, in the building reserve, isn't it in there for the year two?
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, I think it is.
Is it?
It is, it's in the building reserve, I'm pretty sure. I think that came up. Yes, Steve?
All right, are you done with that?
Not quite.
Right, something different.
Okay, okay. He also has another member item.
Yeah, so zoning and rezoning, what is the right time to bring up consideration of the expansion of the TDD? That is the traditional downtown district.
I got an answer.
Do you think there's a wrong time?
Yes.
I've got an answer, before the budget's done.
Or after the budget? You want to take that on now?
That's the best time to bring it up, after the budget.
After the budget?
Yes.
Not before?
No, because we don't have any time. We gotta concentrate on the budget.
I can do multiple things at once.
Yeah, but we already gave you one thing. We gotta.
I've been told that you're going to do this.
I'm good anytime. Whatever people want to do.
What do you want to accomplish?
The consideration for.
Expanding.
Expanding it.
Why?
Because there are multiple properties in the neighboring zones that have no residential neighbor, right?
Abutment or something, yeah.
Abutment or.
It should be included.
Adjacency. Adjacency.
Right.
There is the auto, Pittsburgh Auto, right? There is the buildings connected here, the bakery and Rachel's. There is a small area of parking or parking lot in a building out behind Breathe, I think, or somewhere in that neighborhood. And so that's just a question.
Mister Chu, Lily tried it this quarter.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just a question.
Yeah, I'm wondering what you're looking to accomplish besides, what do you want to do, what do you want to get out of a district expansion?
Brainwork.
Okay, so good question. And this also has a little bit to do with this district, but it's the idea of, if you create a slightly larger district, when you go to present ideas to major New York State funding projects like New York Forward, where you can try to incorporate redevelopment of the space to expand the density of the four corners in a historic way that's, you know, appropriate for our village, thinking about whether or not it has anything to do with parking and lot coverage or setbacks and things like that, they may be slightly different in the zones. So what it's doing is.
Can I stop you right there?
Sure.
There is no difference in parking between the TDD and the, let's see, what is it?
Okay, good.
So I think. There might be, and there's very slight differences in the setbacks.
Lot coverage?
And lot coverage. I think, I think lot coverage is a hundred percent. The front setback, I think, is where you get. Add a little up there. There are minimal differences between TDD and the other. Certainly parking is not one of them. VCB.
Is your questions, right, so I think lot coverage was, are your questions because you have to be able to find why you're giving it on a broader scale to ensure that it's a defensible action?
No, I'm wondering, my question was, was really geared around, if we know what you want to accomplish, then we could probably draft the zoning. Right, so we need to know what it is you're trying to accomplish for that zone. And then at that time, we would probably want to address the zoning of the TDD to make sure that what you want to accomplish with the district expansion can be accomplished.
Okay, I understand. So more specificity in terms of the nuanced differences and why I think one may be better than the other.
I don't, I don't pretend to know whether a bare expansion of TDD into some lots does anything for marketing our village as a place the state might want to spend money. I don't have an answer to that question. Shouldn't certainly possible. But I think that when you, when you do zoning, you ought to have thought in mind of what you want to accomplish for that district, vis a vis the rest of your village.
Okay. Because that's what was done when it was originally conceived and what was driving the decision-making at that time. I will point out that the southern registration, I think, has proximity to residential, and that's why it was not included. It was very specifically not included in the, in the TDD. So I just won't put out that one, probably. I think there was something connected to each one of those that you mentioned that specifically precluded it being in that district when originally.
So it doesn't exclude you from revisiting it or maybe taking a look at it in a different way? You know, everybody has.
For example, setbacks. The front yard setback is the difference between VCB and TDD is zero feet or 15 feet, right? Or minimum side yard, zero ten, that's all the same. So setback was one. And then there was height going from 35 feet to 40 feet, so that's two and a half stories to three, right? Minimum building height, there isn't one in the VCB, there is one in the TDD, it's two stories. So it's this idea of what we really love, can we create a little more of? And outside of the TDD, you may not necessarily be able to. And again, I know we're historic, so the idea of anything ever coming down or being developed is very challenging, but it's, you know, a little bit of growth, is it appropriate? Or just a little bit of more flexibility? So I'll look more at it.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a proposal, you know, anyway. That's it.
No, but thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, oh yeah, Steve, you did want us.
Yes, a couple things. Typically, now to interrupt your sister, if this were to become the fruition, when would it happen? Would it happen prior to May first?
No, no.
Okay, what do you define, how do you define coming to fruition?
Implementing it.
To, to actually make it, it happen. Because typically, right now in March, I send out the, the bills for these carriers, right? And if we were going to end up getting an RFP and only one carrier and I, and we charge the other carriers for a full year.
Dorothy.
For license, the license. Pardon, you mean for the license?
Yes.
Okay, Dorothy, yeah.
You're still going to have commercial entities that are going to choose their own carriers.
Okay, so just do it in all, all right. Two other things real quick. Well, you may, you may tell them that we have an, we have an RFP up, we're considering going to, as a board is considering going to a district.
I would think that probably what we're going to do is everybody who's already licensed in this village is going to receive.
It changes a bit.
The notification. I would think that would just be a no-brainer.
Yeah. Second thing, and I don't even know if this is possible, along the lines of the sewer and backups, can we require anybody who has a grease trap to end report the cleaning?
I think, I'd love to do that.
You know what I mean? And they have to prove, it's something, you know, an invoice, an invoice, something monthly to prove that they're.
I would love to do that.
Because there was a facility in the village, I'm not going to name names, that it had never been done.
Okay, how do we do that? How we go about doing that?
Love session.
Okay.
So would that be something that you and Steve could work on and bring back to the board? Oh, but wait a minute, this is a member item, so we would have to direct you to, let's put it on the next agenda then?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because we can't take an.
And third, I have along with Dave was looking at the zoning, I would like to, after the budget process, go back to the code review, I don't respect.
Yes.
We've left.
That would be.
I mean, there were multiple items.
You have a big list.
Every now and then.
Yeah, just cleaning stuff up.
Good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
We just talked briefly on the refuse district. I had a, I was playing tennis with a guy the other day who had said in their neighborhood, the voting for the refuge, I know, I know we don't have to vote on it as a village, but we tried to. And what they said was, it was supposed to be anonymous, the, the local area voted in favor of it. Oh, no, they voted it down, but he voted in favor of it, and the people who he had picking up his trash dropped them. So my question to us, as part of the refuse district bid process and all of that, if we're moving down this road, what assurances do current residents have that from the time that we start moving this forward and adopt it, to the time that the new contract starts, that whoever is required picks up their trash? Because nobody's going to actually sue the front collector.
Do we know why they were dropped?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, right now that's.
They're still getting paid.
Well, but hey, but.
So.
You know.
Their concern was.
There could have been a number of reasons.
Their concern, and I'm pretty sure they're good for their paying their bill, their concern was, is that it became public knowledge that they voted to approve it and they were dropped accordingly. That was what they had said. They just went and found another vendor.
Yeah.
So I would like to know, again, we're moving this forward in the bid, but it would be nice to know the assurances that we have that we can make this happen quick, and if we have gaps in coverage from existing carriers, that the village DPW can pick up the mess. The answer's probably not.